Okay, first and second discussion.
Want to do a roll call on this?
Uh, we can suspend it for this. So, all in favor of approval of agenda?
Aye.
Any opposed? Agenda is approved as written. So, now, as you said, Dave, where's the first one? Jeffrey?
He went to get his super.
And his clip untied? You're laughing, but at least now it's in the picture.
Yeah, you're all laughing, yeah.
And you're being recorded.
You don't, you know. I've got some extra resumes if anybody needs one.
We've got copies. You've got copies, I'm sure.
Okay, so. Y'all just want me to ask the questions and...
I've asked, they've taken turns.
You want to take turns? It doesn't matter to me.
It doesn't matter because they're all pretty well spelled out, so.
Alright, I'll just read them off and we'll do that way. Uh, okay, so please, tell us about yourself and why you are interested in the job.
I've been interested in the job because I've been working here in the city of Tracy now for two years. And this was a position that I did look at a couple of years ago and I didn't feel I was ready for it. Because of many reasons, just for the fact that it is different than what I was used to over the past thirty-one years with Schwanz. And now getting more into the economic development and learning what goes on in a city and... And just for just what I feel for the city of Tracy and raising my kids here for twenty-three years. It's a position I think I can make a difference for the city.
Does anybody have anything else on that question? So you mentioned that, um, you didn't feel you were ready, but you do now. So what's changed?
I don't think you're ever ready for a new position because there's a learning curve. There's a time of learning what you need to do, you know, the ins and outs. You know, some of the interviews that I've done in the past couple of weeks since I knew I was gonna possibly get an interview from this, talking to some city administrators, you know, you know, day-to-day duties. You know, it can go anywhere from a week where it's cut and dry in what you're gonna do to a you don't do anything that you were supposed to do that for that next few days because of things that come up. Whether it's something within the city or something comes in within the city council or the EDA. And, you know, it's a job just like the ones I've had before. And with the EDA, you gotta just roll with the punches. Do what needs to get done, do what's important, make sure you do a good job, make sure the ending result is good for the city itself. And that's for any of the commissions, whether it's the planning commission, the EDA, the all of the, you know, the airport commission, the city council. Everybody needs to do what's right and needs to do what's best for the city moving forward. Maybe not for tomorrow or the next day, but for five and ten years down the road. I've been promoting that for two years now. You can't think of what's going on right now, it's what's gonna happen in ten years. How are we gonna set the city up to succeed ten years from now?
Okay, anyone else? We'll move on to the next one. Why are you considering leaving your current position?
I will tell you that I enjoy what I'm doing very much. I enjoy the people I'm working with, I enjoy the EDA board, I enjoy the city of Tracy. I, you know, maybe, I feel there's more for me. There is, you know, the direction of the city over the past couple of years is a good direction. There's bumps in the road, but it is a good direction that we're in and I want to be a big part of that. And I think as the city administrator, I can be a bigger part of that than even with the ED, as being the EDA director.
Anyone else?
You think you'd be up to doing both, Jeff?
What's that? I'm sorry, Tony.
You think you'd be able, be up to doing both?
I've got some ideas, Tony. You know, it's nothing, I don't think, and it's not that I wouldn't share anything here. You know, I've been thinking about this for two months. I've had a lot of time to think about it. There's some things that can roll over into both of them. I know that there's some cities, I'll give you an example, the city of Pipestone. Jeff Jones does both the C, or the EDA job and the city administrator job. But it all comes down to the supporting cast. Well, that's in any position, whether it's you out at Solomon where you, you gotta have a supporting cast. I mean, if you don't have a supporting cast to help you with what needs to be done and all are moving towards the same goal. No, then I would say, you know, no, then, but I, if, you know, with a certain amount of help, I think there's some that we could cross over there. Yes, I do believe that. I know that didn't answer it completely, but the fact is, until I got into that position, I mean, that goes to one of the questions that I'm gonna ask is, you know, there are a lot of things that I'm going to need to be a big part of over the next six months. Things that have gotten started over the past two years that I cannot walk away from. And I won't walk away from them. And if I'm the person that needs to be a part of that, whether it's, you know, whatever project might be, you know, who knows what happens after that? Again, it's a learning curve and it's, and there's gonna have to be some patience, not only the city, but the city council, the citizens. You know, because this isn't gonna be a, you know, turnkey operation tomorrow morning if I get hired.
Hey, anyone else? Move on to the next one. Please tell us about one mistake you made in a previous job and how you handled it. Hate that one.
You liked that one, is that what you said?
Well, I hate that one when I get asked it.
You know, there have been plenty of mistakes made in a thirty-three years of working. I'm fifty-four years old, thirty-one years with Schwanz, you know, two years as the EDA director here. I guess I'm gonna go with maybe one of the ones at Schwanz that they're a lot easier for me to use, just because there was plenty of those and it would be hiring the wrong person. And multiple times, you don't, I'm a very good judge of character. In fact, if you'd ask me what my best trait is, I think I'm a very good judge of character. But I can work with anything, I can work with anybody. But I can, in a matter of not too long of a time, I can tell you what kind of person you are and what you bring to the table. And I've made mistakes with that before, maybe hiring a manager, a sales manager that I put into a position that had no business being in that position. You know, and that is a big mistake in my old job. You know, with the current EDA position, you know, there's been plenty of things because it was a learning curve. I mean, I was coming out of the corporate world, you know, with two hundred employees working for me and, you know, with managers underneath me. But, you know, all of a sudden now I'm working by myself and I'm in the EDA. I'm gonna tell you, somebody had to explain to me in the first couple of weeks what EDA meant. And it's a whole different story. But there's been plenty of mistakes over the past couple of years. But you learn from your mistakes and you move on. You just can't get, you can't be gun shy after you make a mistake. You admit the mistake and I've never had a problem admitting that, hey, I'm wrong. Let's move on from here.
Okay, so let's take the instance of hiring the wrong person. How did you handle that?
You eventually have to sit down with them and for me, it's sitting down with that person. I think anybody on this board, I'm a big one-on-one meeting person. If I've got a problem with you, Anthony, guess who the first person I'm coming to talk to? It's not Jerry. I'm coming to talk to you first and we're gonna see if we can get it handled. And, you know, it would, you know, there've been, there was a few times that I had to come in and say, you know what? I feel I made a mistake, what do you think? So what is our, what's our exit strategy? What do we do from here? You know, how can we fix this problem? You know, and then if it gets pushed past that and you can't have a one-on-one conversation or if that doesn't work, then you gotta take the next steps and that person doesn't get to be on your team anymore.
Anyone else? Okay, do you consider your management style to be most like a commander or a coach? And explain.
I think there has to be a combination of both of those, but I think the first part of it has to come out as a coach. You know, with the city here, you have department heads that you have to trust. And, but you have to know not exactly what they do and know their job down to every detail because that would be literally impossible. But the fact is, you have to be able to go in there and help someone and you have to do that by coaching them. You know, there has to be, with a city administrator, there has to be decisions that need to be made. And they're gonna be, you're gonna get all the information, you're gonna do your research, but then when it comes down to it, you're gonna have to, yeah, you have the city council, but there's gonna have to be decisions that have to be made. Then it comes off a little bit more as, you know, if I'm the one in charge, then I'm the one that's gonna have to live with the decisions that are getting made. So, you know, then you are, you are the commander. But I would say more on the line of a coach.
Anyone else? Feel free to jump right in there, you know, if you have something. Okay, what would others that have worked with or for you say about you?
And anybody and all of you know me well. I don't talk about myself a whole lot. I've never, in all the years I worked at Schwanz or here, I don't take compliments very well as I don't wanna, it's my job, I want to move forward, but I do like to succeed and I...
Well, if ever there's a time to blow your horn, now is it.
People would tell you that I do not like to fail. People tell you that I am easy to work with until I become not easy to work with. And sometimes you have to get to that point. I believe in coaching people, like we talked about with the last question. I believe in working with people and I believe in people, period. I think you can get the best out of people with a little bit of sugar as opposed to, you know, sticking something down their throat. That would be one thing, you know, and I know there's, you know, I, you know, I blow my own horn, okay. I could've brought you two hundred letters of recommendation. They would've bored you. I don't believe that there's, oh, there's been a few people that I've worked with in the past, in the past thirty-five years that obviously I didn't get along with very well and maybe I didn't get along with them because of personality, whatever the case may be. But I'm betting ninety-five percent would've given me a good recommendation for this job or any other job. Nobody likes to fail. And when you put that across to somebody that you don't like to fail and you treat people well, they don't want to fail you. And I think I've instilled that in people, where people don't want to fail me.
Anyone else? Okay, I'm gonna move on and if you all have something, just throw it in there. I'm not gonna ask after every question, I'm just gonna keep moving, so. Alright, in this job, no two days are alike and even though you have a to-do list for the day, a telephone call can change everything. How do you take care of the phone call and still get your other work done?
You have to have a list. And you have to put in the time that's needed to get your list taken care of. It's not just a five-year goal list, it's a, what am I gonna do today? What am I gonna get accomplished by the end of the week? And I love to be able to cross things off the list. And I have a list every day. And there are a lot of things that do come up and that's why my desk is not clean. What is the phrase, a clean desk is a sign of a crazy mind? I don't minds, I must not be crazy because my desk is, it's always got a number of projects on it. And you do, even in my position as the EDA director and I know even more as the city administrator, things come up and you have to address the things that are important. And some of them are the ones that pop up that day. But you can't forget about the things that you were working on either.
So how do you do that?
Stay organized and you gotta put in some time, too. I mean, that's one of the things, in alone time, it can't be constantly people walking in and out of an office because, you know, it's great to have conversations, but you also have to make sure that you have time to yourself to get those things done. You'd be surprised what you can do and I'm sure every one of you can have experienced this where you get alone on a Sunday for four hours and you can do more than you could do on Monday and Tuesday with people walking in and out. That's one of the things I've never been afraid to do and that's kinda what I was entrusted with the current EDA board and administrator we had and any of the positions I had with Schwanz. They never had to worry about me getting my work done. I just got it done, no matter what kind of time it took me.
Okay, what is your, I hate this one, too. What's your biggest weakness and strength?
What's my biggest strength?
Biggest weakness and strength.
Can we go with strength first?
Sure.
Sure.
Whatever order you would like.
I feel my biggest strength is I do get people to want to work for me. And when you can get people that are experts at their positions, working hard for you because they want to do well for you, I think that definitely helps. Weakness? Sometimes I have too much trust in some people. But I think you need to give people every benefit of the doubt before a decision is made. And maybe that, you know, one plus one is two, two plus two is four. But now sometimes you gotta think into some things and it takes a little bit of time. And in this position, I believe that when you're researching something, it might take you a little bit of time before you can make a decision. I don't think I'm slow at making decisions. In fact, I've been accused of making decisions too quickly sometimes. But I don't think that is a, I don't think that's a weakness. I think that's more on the line of being more aggressive than anything else.
How do you handle conflict between staff members and city residents? And I think that's designed to be one or the other, separate. So, not between the two parties. So, we'll just go with the first one. How would you, between staff members?
First of all, and me having, that's one of the things I've got more experience than most in it would be handling staff members. I believe you need to get, everybody's got a story. And the story you're gonna get from somebody sometimes isn't the same story that you would get if you got two people in an office. I got Tony and Dave working for me right now and Dave says Tony did this and Tony said he didn't do that. The first thing you gotta do is go to the individual person and talk to them. Say, Dave, what's your side of the story or I gotta know what's going on? And we need to figure this out and we need to solve this. And then you need to go to Tony and get his side of the story and try to figure it out. And you need to sort it out from there. But there's times that you can't sort things out with that or you need to sit the two of them down in the same room. And, you know, and it's not funny, but it's amazing how stories sometimes, you know, get a little bit smoother or easier or manageable when you get two people in the same room. Because it's a lot harder to talk in front of somebody that you're accusing them of something. You know, and that doesn't always work because there's gonna be times where if there's something that it's extremely serious, you can't have them in the same room together. But I've always felt that getting people and talking to them one-on-one and getting them together to solve the issues is, it's important. And I think you can roll that right over into the citizens of the city. You know, you gotta know what the problem is. And there's two sides to every story. You get this side of the story, you get the complaint, you go and investigate it, whether it's through Shane or through the fire chief or through the police chief and you figure out what the, you know, what the problem is and see if you can solve it. There's times that you're either gonna make somebody unhappy or you're gonna have to get them together and you're gonna have to try to find a medium point. There are medium points out there. There is, you know, you don't, not everything can be solved, but I believe with a little bit of communication, it's the best way of doing things.
So I think I would ask a little deeper in that. Oftentimes when you have conflict, and we've all seen it even right here, folks are very passionate about whatever the subject is and their position. And oftentimes, that emotion is what clouds the issue. How do you cut through that?
Well, first of all, somebody with passion isn't a bad thing.
No, I'm not saying it's a bad thing.
As long as the passion goes in the same direction, at the direction we need to go. You know, and again, if you take two people that are in some sort of, whether it's an argument or some sort of, you gotta know, okay, here is the ending result, this is the goal that we want to get to. Now, this is where you want to go with it and this is a different way you want to get to it. But there's gotta be some kind of, there's gotta be some kind of answer between the two of them or discussion, there has to be some kind of midpoint where they're going to say, yeah, I understand that and I guess I'm gonna have to give a little bit. I mean, but I will, I'll say it again. Having someone on a board or someone on a city council that has passion for the city of Tracy and this, you can't take that away from them. But there's also a point where the city administrator needs to make a decision on something. I really do, you have to step up and say, okay, Anthony, you're wrong on this. I'm sorry and I know you're passionate about this, but the fact is, this is the direction that we're gonna have to go with this. And can you handle that? But again, it has to come with communication.
I'd say let's go off script and what's one question you have for us as a council?
Now, this one goes along with, I'm gonna give you two of them right now. If I'm hired, I would like to be a big part of the hiring of the new EDA person or a big part of the EDA period. I would expect that, I guess. That's, I don't know if that's a question or of an expectation.
Let's say if we do hire another person for the position?
I would like to be a big part of that hiring.
How long, but how long do you want to stay involved with what they're doing?
Well, it would be a department head, Dave, so I would have to be involved in it weekly for sure anyway, whether it's the EDA meetings, because I think all meetings are important. So I have to go to everything. But there are some things that I think I can share with a new EDA person that they might be able to share a lot with me, I'm not afraid to learn. But the things that I would want to get across to them is the direction that we're going. So it would, it would take some time. There's just no getting around it. I mean, that's, you know, and that's why it's on my list, is we cannot go backwards just because there's not somebody in the EDA position. That just, you can't do that, you can't, it's great you have bumps in the road, but you've still gotta be moving towards the right direction. If I got hired, you know, what was, what's the timeframe that you're looking for as a? I get the start date, you can do that in a week or whatever it might be. But, you know, when would you want, so I'm gonna turn that around for you, Dave. When would you want me to have my hands off the EDA, I guess you could say? Even though I'd like to be a person that would do the interviewing and help the hiring and everything else. It would have to be something that would be worked out between the city council and myself.
And I would, personally, I would expect that, you know, you start, let's say, November first type thing. We hire somebody for an EDA position by December first. I would want a majority of your fingertips out of the process by like February first type thing.
But that sounds, that sounds...
I mean, because I think, you know, that gives everybody a little bit of turnover time and it's like then you'd still have your fingers involved in it because you need to be. But it's also you can turn over all the projects, get all the contacts.
Yeah, and that would take a lot of time, getting somebody hired by that time. I'm not saying it's impossible, but I would want the right person hired.
No, and I'm just saying timeframe like that.
Right, two or three months, yes, absolutely. But then that's where I would have to rely on what I have, would have for staff here in the city. I would have to rely on the city council being patient, I'd have to rely on Shane being patient, I'd have to rely on everybody being patient. But just know, I'm not a very patient person myself.
Okay, what is your experience with budgets and grants and et cetera? And can you describe how government accounting works?
You can talk about the BAN and accounting system that's within the city here. Have I used it? No, I've never had any need to use it. I don't think it's just a public entity that uses that, I think others do, I'm not sure. But it's for your sewer, your water, your payroll can be. I think our new POS system for the liquor store is gonna match right in with, I believe is gonna go right in with it. So, is with the public accounting part of it? No, I feel I would have to go to the same BAN and training as everybody else has gone to, just to learn that. Because it hasn't been, there's been no reason for me to do it in my position. Now, the budgeting part of it, it's a different budget system than for the city. You know, it's not that I wasn't, I'm not used to budgeting the same amount, if not more money, but it's just a different kind of budgeting system. I mean, it's, you know, you have taxes coming in, you have public taxes, you have water and sewer money coming in, you have county property taxes coming in, state funding, federal funding, all of it comes into a funnel. Well, what I was used to for thirty years is everything, the funnel that comes into it, it's called sales. It's called just straight money coming off of the, you know, off of the trucks. So there's, doing a budget, yeah. Doing a, I think the last one was a fifty-two million dollar sales budget, but then you had to budget in your trucks, your people, people expenses. People and trucks were always the most expensive for us. And then you gotta go to the product, you know, so it's, doing a budget, as long as I had some time to look at it, I don't think would be any issue. In fact, I know it wouldn't be any issue at all. I think you need to get it done and you need to look at it through three months and then you need to look at it again at six months to see how you're doing. But you also can't make, you gotta make the right decision, but I'll just give you if a, your biggest piece of equipment that moves snow blows an engine. Well, I don't know if we can afford that. I don't know if we can afford it. I mean, you have to be able to afford those things. You have to be able to make decisions on things based on need and that comes up to, you can put all you want into a budget, but if the police guard, if the police didn't think they were gonna blow up an engine this year so you weren't budgeted for a seven thousand dollar expense, but we need a new engine for the police car, well, you better find that money someplace. Whether it's out of the general fund or whether it's... For me, it was, you know, in the past, it was always a lot easier because it was all sales coming in. So you had that money. You had, I knew what each entity, every depot, every route, every, I knew what all of them were making. You know, anywhere from three percent profit to sixteen percent profit. You knew where you could spend extra money and you knew where you couldn't spend extra money.
One of the things that's been real key for us, especially lately, has been grants. Kind of experience do you have in writing grants and applying for them?
Tried to write a couple of grants and failed. And then you went to... And then you went to the experts, which we have two of them within the city here. You know, we have UCAP that wrote the last grant, and having those contacts for that, you know, the Small Cities Development Grant that we're getting, it's, you know, $650,000, whatever it is. You've kind of got to leave that to real experts. Now, if you've got somebody that can write a simple one, like I've seen Dale Johnson write a grant before for the fire department, and I'm not saying they're simple ones, but it has to be, if you're going after a grant, you have to be the right thing, and sometimes it's the way it's worded. And you have to be, you have to know exactly how to word it. Now, if there are grants to be written that I can, I will, but if it needs to be turned over to a, somebody that does that for a living, then it needs to be turned over for somebody that's living. I mean, I've asked the EDA board, you know, I've gotten permission a couple of times to work with DSI out of Ivanhoe, Minnesota, Department or Development and Services Incorporated. That's what they do. You've got to take a look at the grants on, it's not the spending of the $3,400, let's say, and that was just one that had come up that we were possibly going to apply for. It's if you get the $15,000 grant, and it takes you a couple of tries to get it, in the long run, the money you bring in well outweighs what it costs you to write the grant out. Now, there's some of them that are very simple, that you, there's just dropdown boxes where you go and say, okay, who are you? What entity are you? What city are you from? What are you looking for? They're very simple, but then there's other ones that are in detail. No, right now, I couldn't do a, I couldn't write you one in detail. Could I have done this one for the Small Cities Grant? No. No, that's, that is, that's UCAP's job.
Priorities for your first three months, six months, year?
Pretty easy. No matter who you bring in here, whether it's me or somebody else, one of the main things you've got to get done is you've got to get used to the city itself, the people, the city council. If there's a place that I have a heads up on anybody, it's that, because I know the people here in Tracy, I know the six of you up there, I know the newspaper, I know the people here in the city. So that's something that I'm a step above everybody else. I believe I need to sit down for the first 30 days and find out exactly how I'm going to help the city move forward. And that comes from advice from other city administrators around the area, that comes from sitting with, I have a plan of sitting with, and Shane's on that list, I'll tell you, to have him sit down with the knowledge that he has more than anybody else in this town, sitting down with him going, okay, not only with your department, but with this position, I need your help. So what are we going to do? What do I need to do? I would expect, if I were to become the city administrator here, I would expect the staff around here, if they see me doing something that, hey, that ain't right, I expect somebody to say something to me.
So let's take them kind of, so for your first three months, then you would say you want to get familiar with the city and, you know, which...
The job itself.
That's your advantage in this case.
Yeah.
Six months?
I think you need to take a look at what you're, where you're going to move ahead. You've got to have goals that are out there for and five years, not just what's going to happen right now. I know the city administrator covers a lot of things that are happening right now, whether it's with the planning commission, whether it's with the city council and putting, doing research for what's going to go on at the city council, but you still, the city administrator, I feel, needs to be very involved in what's going to go on years down the road. And if you don't start on those things, you know, just, and I would be working with the EDA person a little bit, okay, what are you doing? Having the meetings with the department heads, you know, where are you going? What are you doing with the planning commission? Shane, what are you doing with the public utilities? What do we need to do that's going to get us five, 10 years down the road? What kind of problems are we going to have coming up here in the next five years? What do we need to start looking at right now? You can't just look at what's happening today. You've got to cover what's happening today, but you've got to look down the road. And I think the first 30 days is going to be a lot of learning. I think that probably even the first 60 days is going to have to be the council, and everybody's going to have to have patience, so I can learn the day-to-day duties. I just don't have a problem learning. Then by 90 days, I think we need to start looking at continuing on the path that we've gone in the last couple of years, and that's forward. I know that's cliche, talking, oh, we want to move forward. You'd better be, because you're either moving forward as a city, or you're not, you're going backwards.
So can I follow in something on that?
Sure.
So with the fact that you don't have city admin background, what's your plan to catch up?
There's a lot of that, Dave, you know, there's a lot of that I can learn right in-house right here. There's a lot of that that I had already started a year ago, you know, and when I got here, I didn't know how to, on my own, set up an agenda for an EDA meeting. I didn't know how to take the minutes, I didn't know how to do any of that. It just takes a little bit of time to get yourself used to it. For the city administrator position, though, I believe the conversations with other city administrators, which I've developed relationships there already, I believe, again, in-house, the League of Minnesota Cities, I don't think we use them enough, you know, and that might be just me, but, you know, there's chapters and chapters and chapters on everything that goes on with the city, whether it's community development, whether it is budgeting, whether it is EDA, the League of Minnesota City has plans for you or gives you some direction. You know, and I've had to use them already, you know, and a couple of things with the EDA, going, I have to get ahold of them, you know, and say, okay, give me some advice on this. Let me talk to, who do I talk to about this type of loan and that type of thing? I think you need to use your resources. I've never had a problem picking up a phone and using a resource that's out there, whether it is somebody within the community, whether it is on the city council, whether it is, we've got some experts that are running this city right now in department heads, that you can get a lot of, a lot of your information from.
I think we're going to have to kind of jump, I think if some of us prioritize different questions, because we're going to run out of time.
We've got 30 questions and we're 37 minutes into it and we're in question time, so...
Well, I'm a no-brainer, I don't get the Twins game on TV anymore.
Tonight, anyhow.
Tonight, yes, it's the one game.
Oh, I bet that's one anymore, Dish doesn't.
Okay, so then let's shift gears. Jerry, you've got a question that you want to...
I'm sure you'd go to me, I said we needed to do, but I don't know which one I want to try on.
You brought it up, so...
I highlighted one.
Okay, go ahead.
Why you over anybody else?
I've got a passion for the city of Tracy, and I've shown that.
What number is that?
21.
Thank you.
I know the different personalities on all the boards. I know that a city administrator needs to work with all personalities, and I'm not going to say needs to work on both sides, because I don't believe there should be sides. I think as long as we're all working towards the same goals, there shouldn't be any sides. I have that over everybody right now. There's nobody that you're going to be able to bring in here to, that's going to know the city council, the EDA board, the planning committee, the people of Tracy, the businesses here, the, and everybody that, honestly, that are important. I'm going to know that more than, more than anybody. And I've proven it again and again for 30 years that I can learn anything. Takes me time like anybody else. And that's where I'd be looking for a little bit of patience. I take direction, I take criticism.
All right, then your turn again, Jerry. You got anything in mind?
Okay, so you're aware of some of the challenges that we're currently experiencing within the city and with the residents and everything, Anthony, the papers and social media and everything.
Sure.
So if you're hired as the administrator, how would you propose that we move forward?
One of the things that you need to do, and we've talked about that before, and this isn't cliche, Jerry, when you're talking about it, you need to have everybody on the same page. And that's not, that's not an easy task. I think you need to take a look at the, I think you need to work with what's within the city, the city staff first, and make sure everybody understands the direction you want to go and the direction of how we respond to, you talk about the social media part of it. I also believe that you need to reach out to some people. As the, you know, as a city administrator and if they're citizens of Tracy, you need to, you need to reach out to people and say, hey, you know what, I'm glad you have this particular social media site, but can, you know, can we talk about a few of the things that are being put in there? Because we don't want it to be always a negative thing. And is there anything we can do to, you know, to help each other out, for you to help the city out, for, you know, just, I'll be looking for all the help I can. I don't think you can muffle anybody, because that's the world we're in right now, Jerry. I mean, it's, my gosh, you can't find anybody that isn't walking around on their phone right now. I mean, that's where we're, that's the way of the world right now. But you can also, again, talk to people and have those conversations, and, again, you can't have sides. Eventually, this city needs to get to the point where we don't have this side and this side. And there's, because there is a middle point, and I think the city administrator is the first one that needs to be that middle point. And I have shown that. I don't care what side you're on, I'm looking for the good in everybody. I'm looking for the good first. What are you bringing to the table? What is Tony bringing to the table? What does Dave bring into the table? And if you can use that, and if everybody's using what they do best to the good of the city, that's when we're going to succeed. Is there going to be bumps in the road? Yeah, there's always going to be those things. I can't stress enough how much communication is needed, whether it's a city of 2,100 like this, or a city of 10,000 or 200, there has to be communication constantly.
Cool.
You can skip me for now.
Tony?
Go ahead. I was just going to say, you got another question that's burning on your notebook there?
We've actually got a section for that at the end.
We might not get there.
We'll get there. You got anything, Tony?
Explain levy to me, especially how it deals with budgeting.
You're going to have to, you put your budget together, and you have to levy for it. Like this year, it's, I think, 8.03%, and that's what's handed down to the city. I'm not going to be able to sit here and tell you exactly, in fact, you know, you and I had this conversation already once at an EDA board about the difference between a city budget and a, and a budget in a corporate world or whatever. But the levy that gets handed down to the city is what they're going to have to pay to take care of the things that they need within the city. Now, you know, we've got, you know, you've got your bonds and that type of thing, but the levy would be, as far as I, it looks at the, with the taxes, it's going to, what you're going to pay extra this particular year in taxes to pay for the new streets, or whether it is the, you know, the higher property taxes or the lower, or the more in a water bill.
I'm going to reserve the last 10 minutes for questions from Jeff.
I'll be getting a couple of them already, but I still have a couple of them, so...
I've got one more then that has been important to a lot of folks in town. In this position, Jeff, do you plan on moving back to Tracy?
No.
And can you make the emergency response time that are, I'm not sure what it is now, Shane? 15 minutes, 20 minutes?
I think the handler still says 10.
10 minutes?
No.
Would you be able to make the emergency response time for...
If there is an emergency that would take place, it would be more in line of staying here that particular night. I've shown over the past couple of years and talked to anybody here, or I don't have any issues getting here. But no, no, we have bought the home that we're going to live in till I'm 75 years old.
I understand.
I hope till I'm 75 years old. You know, I would expand on that a little bit. We loved the time we were here. We didn't, we didn't, we weren't looking to sell our house, it got sold. We loved the time that we spent here, we love where we're living at right now. I also don't think it's such a bad idea to be able to drive away from it at night and come here in the morning. There's others who say, yeah, I think about work on the way home, and then, you know what you do, you get rid of it all on the way home and you start thinking about everything you need to do in the morning on the way. I don't think we can look at the, hopefully only 10 days out of the year, you know, that you can't make it through the snow. Yeah, and it's, and I don't...
The other thing is you can't make it cross towns, that's...
Yeah, well, and the fact that is, that's not a problem, and I have stayed here.
You got anything, Coop?
If you have a family member or very close friend working for the city and they need to be disciplined, what do you do?
I don't know if you can have anybody working for you in the city, for one thing, and I think that would be a little bit of a conflict, but I know that that sort of thing comes up in a city. I think with a little bit of communication, and you have to let the department handle that more than probably you get involved if it's somebody that is really close to you. And it's, there are, there's going to be plenty of, there's always, and you know this, there's always going to be people issues. But at the same time, people are the most, that's the most important thing to the city, whether it's, you know, I know the citizens, you know, you've got to have them, but in a, a city, just the atmosphere with all the city employees here, you've got to create some kind of, I'm not going to say family, but you've got to create a team. You really do, where everybody's working toward the same direction. But, you know, that's where you've got to put some trust in your department heads, whether it's somebody dealing with, somebody at the liquor store, I think you really need to trust your department head there first, and if it's not getting taken care of, then you need to step in, no matter who it is, if it's a family member or if it's a friend. I'll tell you, I've got, I've still got a lot of friends that live here in Tracy.
So I'm just going to piggyback on that real quickly then, for the conflict of interest in open meeting law that have plagued the city government, what is your approach to avoid these pitfalls? Kind of plays in with...
I think you've got to, you've got to talk about it, for one thing. I mean, and I'll just give you an example of there where it has to be an agenda item. And I can tell you with the EDA, it was an agenda item for the first year, and maybe that's a mistake on my behalf, but now in the last four months or five months or whatever, it's an agenda item. You know, is there any conflicts of interest? It's something that I look at when I go into the meetings. You have to let the people that are on the committee, whether it's the city council or the EDA board, you need to let them come out first and say, this is your, you know, this is what I feel that I have conflict of interest in. But the fact is, if that doesn't come out, I believe it's a city administrator. I'm an outspoken person, Tony, and there's probably nobody on this board that doesn't know that I'm outspoken. And have I stepped out of my bounds sometimes? Yeah, and I think as a city administrator, you've got to be careful with that, but you also can't sit back and be a church mouse and not say anything. I think you need to step up, and you might step on toes and you might say something wrong, and you might get a note from, you know, saying, you know, you really can't do that, that's not your, you know, that's not your job, that's not your place to do that. Well, I can tell you, that'll have to be said to me more than once, because I believe that, I think you can solve things ahead of time, if you address them ahead of time, and not wait and sit back and let, you, it's like a sore. If you let it fester, it's going to get worse and worse. Oh, it's going to get better, it's going to get better. No, you better get some antibiotics on it.
Quick, what's your experience as far as dealing with unions?
You know, not much.
I didn't know if Schwanz was union or not, okay.
Zero, zero. I know that, one of the things that, whether it's a union or not, Jerry, you, conversations that are had with, whether it's department heads, especially with department heads is... as employees that work for them, or need, those, if it's a serious, every, everything needs to be documented. And I've always been pretty darn good about documenting things. I have a conversation, and, and Coop and I are having a serious conversation about an action that, that you actually made, that, that wasn't right for the city. I need to have that, that needs to be in writing, and it needs to be documented, with a, with a date, and going, you know, Coop, fact is, is, you know, this is a pretty serious incident we have here, and, and I want you to read my notes here, if you can. I want you to read my notes, and then I'm going to sign off on this, and you need to sign off on it. And I think with the union, more than anything, you have to do things like that. We had to do that, you know, you have to do that anywhere, you know, because, you know, there wasn't any HR 20 years ago, you know that. Now, in the last 15 years, the last 10, now HR is a department. And the city administrator is the HR department.
All right, so, we've got about 10 minutes left. Anybody else have any pressing question they want to throw out there? And I would give you that 10 minutes to-
Sure, I, I have a couple more questions.
-ask whatever you want to ask us.
But you answered the one about the, the EDA, and I, and I feel that there's a lot of things that we have going on right now, that I absolutely have to, would have to be involved in, especially when there isn't anybody else there. And we would have to start looking immediately. You know, I've got some ideas with that. I think you need to open it up. You know, I didn't have, I feel that I've done a good job for the city of Tracy over the past couple of years, what I've brought to the, to the table. Not only personality, but my way of thinking, my, my forward thinking. But at the same time, I didn't have any EDA experience. I don't think we'd be looking, absolutely looking for this, this person who has 30 years of EDA experience, or 20 years of EDA experience, but I would be, I would expect to be a part of that decision. On whether, you know, we can divvy out some duties, and I can keep that, I don't know that. I can't answer that. That's, that was, that was the toughest question tonight, because it's been on my mind now for three months. And I can't answer that.
I think if you got the job, that would be commensurate with your duties, would be to be involved at a significant level with the feeling of that position, and the turnover for that individual.
Well, and it'd be nice to eventually be able to step back and go, hey, you did a good job on that. You know, and that's, you know, that's what you have department heads for. You know, I got a question, and this is going to be tough for you. How patient are you going to be with the first 90 days? That's, do I know the city? Do I know some of the city government now, like I didn't two years ago? Do I know the EDA? Do I know what goes on in the planning commission? Because I've never missed one, till this Monday night, I'm missing one. Do I know what's going on with the liquor store committee? Yeah, I know what's going on there. I know what the plans are. But it's going to take me a long, it's going to take me quite some time to learn what's going on in Shane's head, and, and what's going on down there. Do I know with the, the police commission and that? No, I have to learn that. There's, there's a learning curve at any city of any size. And then you've got to throw in the personalities to go along with that. It's going to take some time, so I would need you to be patient. But again, I'm not very patient with myself. I told you, go ahead, I'm sorry.
I was just going to say, I guess I look at it, Jeff, you know, you know, there's other candidates and everything. So, we're going to have to be patient with whatever for each candidate. The one thing with you, like you mentioned before, you at least now, you know people. You know some of the projects we're working on, some of the challenges, stuff like that. So, the learning curve for that part of your job, I would expect to be very minimal. But maybe the learning curve for a lot of the different regulations, and the different city business that you haven't had personal dealings with, you know, that, I wouldn't think it would take you a little longer. But I would expect you to be talking to the League of Minnesota City, the, the League of Minnesota Cities, the, you know, other things. But I think we all know, there's going to be a learning curve for whichever candidate.
No matter who gets hired.
You would never have to worry about that, because, because Jerry, and all of you, I use the resources that we, that I have. What made me successful for, for 31 years? I surrounded myself with people who know more than I did. And good at it. Use the, use the, use the people around you, and, and if, and if they're good. There was a lot of years that I was made look very good at my job, because of the people around me.
Well, as far as expectations and stuff, that's a, I anticipate that to be a conversation that we would have in detail, should you be selected.
Sure.
You have any other questions?
One of the things you're going to get with me is, I'm 54, going to work till I'm 64. You're going to get me if you'll have me, and if things go well, you're going to, you're going to get stability. I'm not, I'm not going anywhere. I enjoy the city of Tracy, I enjoy what I'm doing, I enjoy all of you. I enjoy the, the, the people, I enjoy walking up and down the street and waving at people. You know, it might sound small, and petty, and little, it's not. I enjoy doing it. So, that's what you, you would get out of me.
It's one of the perks of living in a small town.
Yeah.
You get to wave at people you actually know.
You know, I really don't have a lot of questions. Is, is there, is there concern, and it was brought up, I think it was you, Tony, brought up, is there concern that I, that I live 30, 35 miles from here?
That's, that's been a common question, and, and a portion of the population. It's very important that, that they move to town. And I've been the one that traditionally has asked the question.
Hey, it concerns me that I, you know, even when I took the EDA position, and, and I thought, man, even though people need to understand, the 70 miles that I put on a day is nothing. And to, to driving on a Monday morning to Minot, North Dakota, and then on Wednesday afternoon, I need to be in Lake, at Lake Superior, and, you know, at Superior.
I think part of it too, is that if you're living in town, then you're subject to what you're doing. If you're not living here, then you're governing and making rules, and whatever that you may do through the course of your duties, and then you leave at the end of the day, you don't have to deal with those decisions.
Understand that.
So, I think that's where the-
Yeah, well, it's, a, a lot of it is, yeah, but it's, it's access, I mean, it depends upon who you talk to. I mean, it's-
Yeah, there's several.
Yeah, there's several facets to it, but it's a question that needs to be asked, and it's not a-
And, and I don't have a problem answering that. It is just, and, and am I going to make it here every day? No. You can see my road.
I think it's also a concern when someone doesn't move here and live here, the longevity.
Right.
You've already assured us, I haven't gotten this sample of blood yet, but that you're going to plan on staying here for the long run, for the 10 years. That's what, when people don't move here, residents right away think, oh, yeah, they're just using us as a stepping stone.
We'll be looking for another one next year, yeah.
I enjoy the people of southwest Minnesota, not just the city of Tracy. I love where I'm living at right now. You know, it's, it's, I like it around here.
And don't get us wrong, there's nothing wrong with that.
Oh, no, I know that, I know that, but I like it around here. I, I love the, the school system, I love everything around here. This is a place that my kids were, were raised. And he asked my wife, I wasn't here, you know, four days out of the week. So, it was the, the city, her and the city of Tracy that raised my kids. And they did a pretty good job.
Well, with that, we'd like to thank you for your time. And do you have any final statements you want to make, or anything like that, then?
I really don't. You know, I think I've shown over the last couple of years of what I can do in a position. I don't see it being any different with, with the city administrator position. It would just be a, a learning curve, just like, like anything else would be. I look for, I love challenges.
Well, there's certainly a few around here. But, thanks for-
You bet, thank you.
Thanks for talking with us tonight.
I should put my jacket on real quick.
You want to get that on camera. Maybe Tara could do a group photo after. You can wear your jacket.
All right, thank you very much.
Thanks.
See you all soon.
Does anybody need to take a break for a couple minutes?
Take a quick break and see if Mike's out there.
So, we will recess for five minutes. I'm going to run out of Mountain Dew.
You're already on your second?
Oh, yeah.
It's only the first hour.
I know. It's, it's been a week, and, uh-
It's Friday, that's the-
You know, I, I teleworked today, so that I could be here on time. And, you know, I started at 8 o'clock, and at 8:10, the power went out. It's Monday, Part 5.
I got to work, and said, I hope my day sure gets better, then it started off. Sitting there in the garage with my cellphone with the lights, so I can try to crawl on top of my, my trunk of the car to reach the release for garage door. Because I couldn't reach it with my car parked underneath it, so I had to try to, oh. I told my husband, thank goodness there is no, no cameras or audio available in the garage, because it, I might have wanted to stand up.
Were you being naughty?
It was not a fun morning.
The bottom of the night? Yeah, yeah, for like three, four hours.
The, the west end of town?
Yeah, so I got my cellphone out from work, tie in the hotspot to that, to get my laptop to connect, and then get VPN connection to the USB network. And if everything's on batteries, you know, you get the cellphone, and you get the computer, so.
You can come on in, Mike.
Uh, so, yeah, I'm just like, how long-
We're at a seat at the Inquisition Table, I'm a data-
How long is this going to, you know, go, so. Good evening, nice to meet you.
Tony Peterson?
Tony Peterson, nice to meet you, Mike.
Thank you. All right, oh, I, you know what? I'll make the circle one more time, I wasn't sure what everyone has.
Your resume? Okay. Super. It looks a lot like this.
It's looking like it, but-
Better safe than sorry.
But I wasted all those papers, so I've got to get rid of it.
Have there been any edits in here?
No, no, I, no, there isn't.
All right, soon as Shane gets back, we will resume.
Last time we were doing interviews, I walked out in that hallway, and I flipped a switch and put one of the next candidates in the dark, and this time, I go out and he's sitting in the dark.
Well, it's not a reflection on the position, should you be selected. It would keep you sitting in the dark.
There will be a test on finding light switches in this whole building.
It's, uh, it reminds me of a saying about growing mushrooms.
There you go.
It's, uh, not polite, not polite for city councils, so.
Pretty sure we fall by that little pasture at one time or another.
Yeah, exactly.
Well, we know Dave can give the tour of the light switches in the basement.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Takes 17 of you to the bathroom.
He's also making out that they're a little higher on the wall than at normal.
I can reach him off.
I will just make sure to wear lifts.
Yeah, he had to break out his 1970s platforms to walk through, hit the lights.
Short Irish stock, so.
Shane, are we back, or do we just go ahead and start?
Well, you should be coming back.
We start.
There you go. Okay, we will resume. What's the word I'm looking for? Recession, end recess, it's, playtime's over.
Back in session.
Yes, back in session, thank you, Tony. Playtime is over. So, uh, this evening, we have Mr. Michael Quinn Livin'. All right, and, um, so, we're just, we're going to ask you a series of questions. I think, to be fair, we should probably stick with the questions that we asked the last candidate. Would everybody agree with that? So, we can, can make that appear. All right, so, can you tell us about yourself, and why you were interested in this job?
Certainly, um, well, from a personal standpoint, uh, very quickly. 38 years old, spent the best years of my life, as far as I'm concerned, besides having my children. Going to Tracy High School, my father took a position at, uh, what is now Tracy Sandberg, but was then the municipal hospital. Made best friends of my life here, and it's one of many reasons why I, uh, was attracted to the position. The probably driving factor of why I was attracted to this position is I've been studying for it since I was 18. I have a political science degree, I have a econ degree. I did, I did research within rural developmental economics. Then went and got my master's degree while having two kids during that time in public administration with a government, governmental, I guess you could say specialty focus. And it's everything I want. It's in an area, area I know, an area I've been in for years with people I love around here, and it also just sparks all my interests. It's a place where it's not a, it's not a skipping point, a place to skip through and then leave. It's a place where I want to land and stay. A position I would want to land and stay.
Okay. Uh, why are you considering leaving your current position?
To be brutally honest, it just doesn't hold, uh, uh, a lot of interest to me. I enjoy helping people kind of deal with, I don't want to say life-threatening situations, but situations that can be overwhelming, and, uh, people being robbed every day, dealing with someone who's been robbed, uh, is certainly an overwhelming experience for them. I enjoy that part, but it doesn't allow me to flex all my muscles of my intellect, of, of my being.
Um, please tell us about one mistake you've made in a previous job, and how you handled it.
Let's see.
We all hate that question.
I was trying to make a funny joke, but if I say only one, then I sound like I'm- I think kind of, uh, I would say putting myself too much in the client's shoes. There's, if you're an administrator, if you're in customer service, if you're digging a ditch, if you're farming a, a field, you can't be a total empath. And at times, people are so taken aback as to what happens to them, that you lose the thread on how you have to, for example, control a call, a conversation within Wells Fargo. And one thing I, one mistake I made was just trying to calm people down instead of perhaps just serving them well by saying, you're fine, let's do this, do this, this, expect your money Tuesday, thank you. I mean, just taking care of business is what's needed more often than not. It's definitely a-
How did you handle that, then?
Just retraining your brain. Practice over and over, it's, uh, I play guitar. At first, going from a C chord to a G chord seems like it's incredibly impossible. And if you don't play guitar, I'll bring one in and you can, I'll show ya and you'll see.
It's a challenge when you're first-
When you're first, you know, when you're first starting out. Through practice, it gets really fluid, it's just doing it over and over and over again. When you're at home, when you're driving, it's just practice.
Okay. Uh, do you consider, and I don't want this to sound like an interrogation, but we've got a lot of cut, a lot of things to cover, so. Uh, do you consider your management style to be more like a commander or a coach? And explain why.
I, I would say more of a, well, commanding coach. I'm more of a coach than a commander, I mean, there's some things you just do where there's no difference between a commander and a coach. If a coach says run laps, you run laps, you know? Uh, but let's say someone's having trouble executing one of their tasks. You don't, you're not gonna teach them anything by punishing, punishing them. You want your employee to get better at what they do, not- you didn't hire them to berate them and have them walk out and create this circular door there. So more often than not, coach, I want people to, uh, not only be able to pick up skills, but be experts at them. It takes so long to be an expert that I want to, uh, build that up in somebody. And if they choose to go somewhere else, they have that with them for their next position. It only, it serves everybody well.
Okay. Um, what would others you have worked with or for? What would others that have worked with or for you say?
About me?
Mm-hmm.
One of the best-looking men that has ever walked the earth.
Very nice.
No, I don't, pardon.
Tom?
He was better looking than I was. I'll give him that. He had his hair.
That's his dad, sorry.
I see, okay, well-
In all seriousness, pardon me, um, extremely dedicated, um, uh, family-oriented. I hesitate to say insanely driven, but if there's a nice way to say, driven to the point of not pathological, but I'm going to get it done. If, uh, if I am given a task, it will be completed and it will be completed to what? It needs to, at the level it needs to be completed at, by the time it needs to be done. Now, that's not a big deal, but in terms of just, I guess.
Task-oriented.
Very task-oriented. If you told me to dig a five-mile trench, I will do it. If you'd just give me a shovel, I will get it done, it will be what it needs to be.
Okay. In this job, no two days are alike. And even though you have a daily to-do list, um, a telephone call can change everything. How do you take care of that phone call and still get your to-do list done? That's pretty ambiguous, I know, but.
Looking back where, uh, I managed what kinda seemed to feel at times like a small city. There's about twenty-five hundred people, uh, in the Citibank building that, uh, I managed the cleaning crew in head to toe, amongst other things that we did. And yeah, one call there would put off the whole thing. You, not to sort of dismiss the question, but you simply just have to absorb it, kind of rank where that telephone call, the situation on the call or whatever is going on with it. Rank it comparatively to what else is on that table that day. And give it the attention it deserves while still completing everything else. I don't view a job in administration as sitting at a desk going, you know, "You do this, you do this, you do this." I was always elbow-deep in cleaning myself because that's how we were always gonna get it done there. I consider any position I have like that. I, I need to be hands-on.
Okay. Here's another one of those great questions. What is your biggest weakness and strength?
You know, um, biggest weakness would perhaps be... I can kinda let, uh, a worst-case scenario, uh, play out in my head before, uh, I'm confronted with that scenario. I don't wanna say it.
Say that again?
I can let a worst-case scenario play out in my head a little bit before I'm confronted with a scenario at times. Not to the point of paralysis, but some people are... I can, I can just kinda let my mind get a little gooned out at times. That being said, I would say my greatest strength plays directly to that in that it still won't stop me from doing what I need to do. I may be incredibly nervous, scared, whatever, by a certain situation. I'll still be there, I'll still get it done. Ninety-nine percent of the time, I, I'll kill it. I will find that I'm abs, you know, I'm great at it. And it was just sort of that little voice in the back of your head, you know, like it usually always is.
Okay. How would you handle conflict between staff members?
There's, I mean, there's written human resource rules that we all need to follow. There's also the fact that, uh, we are all adults and work at the pleasure of the city of Tracy. And I'm kind of a... You should get one chance to perhaps not explain yourself, but you know, just kinda figure out what's going on. Uh, unless something's so egregious that it's just blowing everything right there. But just simply not getting along, conflict, work to iron it out if you can't do it after one time. I suppose it depends on the seriousness of the situation, but there's just moving forward with punitive measures from there. Everyone needs to live by the same code.
How about, uh, city residents? Conflict between the city residents?
Everyone needs to live by the same code.
Okay, alright.
Yes, sir.
What is your experience with budgets, grants, um, that kinda thing? Can you describe how government accounting works?
Um, I had, uh, a lot of studies within, uh, the budgeting, grant-writing. In terms of, of, uh, oh, pen-to-paper budgeting, I suppose, or job-oriented budgeting. As much as I don't like to admit it, I haven't had enough time to gather a lot of real-world experience doing it. That being said, I've always found myself to be an incredibly adaptive, quick learner. I didn't know anything about industrial cleaning when I began running a cleaning crew all of a sudden. Now, that's not running a, you know, a city administration, I wouldn't argue that it is. But, uh, within the same timeframe, I learned how to run a cleaning crew incredibly well. I don't doubt my abilities to adapt, learn, ask questions, and just plain lay it all out to get the job done.
Okay. If you were selected for the position, what would your priorities be for the first three months, six months, year?
Um, well, with three months, I mean, for the whole year, I know exactly what I would wanna do, which is have the, the budget in top-down, tip-top, you know, just, uh, clean as a whistle, as tight as possible for every cent spent. And everything else, I would want to move towards that. I guess I would seek to get to know all the staff and each one of you and see where there is a common consensus on where the town is moving forward. The way, I guess, I look at it is you know, one year, two years, five years, I kinda wanna hear everybody's ideas for the next fifteen years, so to speak. I don't plan on, if I get this position, while I serve at the, uh, at the, uh, while I serve the council and am employed, you know, by the council. I would like to think far beyond all of us to, you know, and the common consensus of where we wanna go from there is.
So what would be the first thing you did? When, if you're selected, what would be the first thing that you're gonna do? Or your priority, not necessarily a plan, but your priority.
Priority? Um... Just put as much time in on the ground here, uh, I mean, put as many eleven-hour days in as the three months would require. Just hit the ground, running, shadow, Shane, shadow yourself, sir, Mr. Peterson.
Just get to knowing everything.
Get to know everything, yeah.
Get to know your-
Yeah, exactly.
Okay.
I mean, just because I've been here every year, one visitor, two visits a year, of course, is not day-to-day, so. Exactly, just get in there.
Okay. Um... If you have a family member or very close friend working for the city and they need to be disciplined, how would you handle that?
Everybody needs to follow the same code. It's, uh, it's never, I don't find, I don't take any joy disciplining anybody because, again, we're adults. I think sometimes disciplining adults is even harder than children. Adults are rarely cowed by you or, or, uh, or come away respecting you more, but the same as anybody else. I hold myself to high standards of ethics, morality. I want my workers to hold that as well. And if you're my mom, son, best friend, I don't care if you've broken that, you will be disciplined accordingly to that.
Um, tell us why you should be offered this position over any of the other candidates? What's your advantage?
Well, knowing what I know about all of the candidates interviewing, we all bring, uh, definitely diverse array of talents. I have a lot of blood and guts, HR, administration experience. In terms of just moving the office forward, uh, I can hop in and do that just fine. There's gonna be a learning curve for everybody. I have a gentleman I can lean on twenty-four-seven without having to bug, you guys or, or even employees, where I can bounce off troubles and tri, trials, tribulations and get set straight. One thing that also occurs to me i- is that, uh, I mean, the prior gentleman ended up lasting a year. I wouldn't wish that first month on him, on anybody, with that big flood, that was just horrible, you know? And a lot was going on there. I, I'm thirty-eight. If you want me, I'll be here till I'm sixty-eight. I want, I have a keen affinity for this area. And again, it's not, this isn't a, a step so then I can move back to Sioux Falls. This is, this is where I've wanted to be for a long time. It's why I keep coming here.
Okay, um, what is your knowledge of employment laws as it applies to union employees?
Uh, I'd have to brush up, I know we did have a lot of administrative. I haven't been in a situation where I've needed to, um, apply that since school, sadly. But I have read and read and read a ton of law recently, I mean, until the past couple of years, so I'm familiar with administrative law, employment law. Yeah, I don't, I don't think I would have trouble executing or understanding it by any means.
Okay. Do you intend to live in Tracy, and can you make the emergency response time that applies to the other employees? Which I believe we established is ten minutes.
Yes, I do intend to live in Tracy. What was the emergency response time?
Ten minutes.
I guess we're still written as yet.
That's the current standard.
I don't see why not. I mean, you can get anywhere in town within ten minutes. Now, if I went down on Saturday to visit my mom in Sioux Falls, no, but, I mean, this is a job that I, I don't consider it a Monday-through-Friday job. I mean, it's 24/7. However, if something happens, even on the weekends or whatever, it's not, my phone's not off, it's always on, I will be there.
You know, eleven minutes is a fireable event.
Well, if you live in town, you meet the time limit anyway. That's for the employees that chose to live outside the city limits.
Uh, yes, yes, I, I intend to live here.
Okay.
I intend to be within that time, yep.
Conflict of interest and open meeting law have plagued city government as of late. What is your approach to avoid these pitfalls?
That's a good question, yeah. There's sort of a you hit on a big scholastic debate in terms of public administration. It's very dry, and I never took a lot of interest in it, but it was, you know, should, for example, an administrator have a lot of autonomy to sort of do what they want? Or do they simply serve at the behest of the council? Is it both? I view this job is inherently political, but at the same time, I don't think it has to be simply because I'm here to execute what the council, what you as the mayor sort of decide to do when you break it down. I also have to run the office and oversee certain things, but how that is politicized, I don't I don't want to get into particular situations with people. I want to be you know, I want to be friends. If someone wanted to go and grab a coffee and say, "How's the office?", you know, great. But I'm, I'm tight-lipped about the inner workings of, of any managerial purview of my own. If you don't need to know it or shouldn't know it, I'm not gonna tell you. I'm not, it seemed like I was perhaps, I'm not trying to dance around it, I just don't I'm not interested in politics here. I'm interested in efficiency and effectiveness. I want the city to move forward. And I think that's something we could all agree on.
To maybe clarify a little, as, if you're selected, as a city administrator, the council, we're not we're regular folks, citizens of, of the city. So oftentimes, we're gonna be looking to our administrator for knowledge, clarification, and whatnot, and I think that's more what this question is based on.
I see, okay.
You know, what, how would you approach instances of perceived conflict of interest or testable conflict of interest when the council looks to you to solve that or guidance on that?
If, if approaching it like in a when I, when I hear guidance, I hear perhaps education, educate, educating examples. There's, there's mountains of good and bad in terms of conflict of interest that, that we can educate ourselves with and not make anything personal. I would certainly choose to do it that way and not say, "Mr. Tao, I would, I would remind you, you know, that per this example, clearly you're doing all this wrong." And I mean, it has to be, in my opinion, a I have to assume everyone's better natures until it is not shown that way. And I, and I do, that's basically how I approach people.
Because I, I think everyone would agree that we like to work as a team as best as we can. It's probably the most efficient way to get things done. And so oftentimes, the city administrator's role, we look to them for that guidance to keep us all straight, keep us all on the same page, keep us all going in the right direction. So, and I, and I think that's where that question was directed.
I, I mean, to build on, on that, sir, I I mean, extremely everyone says they're friendly. I'm perhaps friendly to a fault. But I can make friends with I mean, give me five minutes, and I think I can at least get on a very good side of someone from Alabama and then someone from New York City and
New York City?
New York City.
Are you familiar with the challenges that we've had lately here in Tracy?
Somewhat, yeah, yeah.
Okay, so how would you move us forward from current events?
If it hasn't been done yet, okay, I'm just gonna say that for the example, it hasn't been done yet. I think every city, every business needs a clear vision, value, mission, vision, values. We gotta if, if you can agree on those three things, why are we here? What are we trying to do? What is that which we hold dear and what we're trying to deliver? You can get everything done. So I would refocus. While it sounds simple, it's, I mean, it can be surprisingly difficult to even get mission, vision, and values going, but you get that one strip done, and I think moving forward from there you use that as a beginning road and expand from there.
A grounding statement. Would you, would that be fair? Like a grounding?
Exactly, yeah, yeah.
Does anybody else have any questions that they would like to? Did I miss that one?
Yep.
Okay, very good, thank you. This is why we work together as a team. Yes. Please explain what levy means as applied to budgeting.
I would I would presume it would mean, pardon me, in terms of levying taxes, whatnot. Where one to levy taxes would be to set upon, I suppose. As a verb, to set upon.
What is it? What are we setting upon? What, what is a levy? What does it? How do we come up with it? If we say we're gonna, we have a 5.2% levy, what does that mean?
I'd have to take, I'm not, I'm not gonna try and grab something out of thin air. I mean, it could, I mean, sales tax doesn't, doesn't mean, doesn't mean property tax. I I don't want to take a stab in the dark on it.
No, and that's good. I would rather you're honest than try and blow smoke.
What I got for me is a levy is, is a tax that's imposed on people. That's the way
Right, yeah.
Yeah, that's the way I
Yes, sir.
Okay, does anybody have Well, I would like to thank you for your time, and we do have some time left. So before we conclude, do you have any statements or questions for us or things that you want to reiterate or highlight?
I'm just very pleased to be here. I'm honored to be in front of be in front of this is the first time we've met Mr. Dimmer, but Mr. Peterson, I think we met last time.
Were you?
No.
No?
They wouldn't let me play last time.
He was being naughty, I was sitting in a corner.
Well, um
And I do understand that this is a very intimidating setup here, you know, you're sitting here in front of a whole, you know, it's just it's because it's what we got. So we're not trying to be intimidating, but I understand that it is. If I was in your position, I would not be comfortable. So
I was hoping I wasn't showing it that much. I guess I would say this. Given even a little bit of time for growth, I will, I can, I don't like to guarantee anything, and I think if someone does guarantee you something, they're lying through their teeth. However, I know myself, and this is the type of of a job that I simply excel at. It's just tough to come by. And to be honest, you know, you have young children, you have other life, things happen where it gets important where you just sort of need health insurance, and you can't chase your dream of state government or federal government work or something like that. So you I don't want to say tread water, but you work a position that provides and gives what your family needs for that time. This is, this is a rare opportunity where not only does it provide what my family needs, but it provides what I need. I I live and breathe the day-to-days of this. I do have a steep learning curve, I won't lie, compared to the other gentlemen, but I think what you will also get is, well, this I know, you'll get an incredibly long service from me. As long as anyone wants it.
Well, if there's nothing further, I guess that would conclude the interview.
I appreciate it. At least I got to meet you this time.
Again, we want to thank you for coming up and spending some time with us, letting us get to know you a little bit.
Certainly. I do appreciate the, the time, and I do want to thank you for having me here, so. And I do it is my poor handwriting.
Thanks, Mike.
I will, I will. Thank you, Travis.
I guess we will go into recess at this point, or? Say, ten minutes.
Hello, how long will it take you to get to her setup? You gotta wait for her to call in, or you're gonna?
I'll pull it seven, so I'll try to be close to that as possible, but I haven't run with her audio, so we're gonna put her on Skype for the video, and then we're gonna call her on the regular phone for the audio part of it, so.
You know, that's how we run every meeting in USDA. I'm not kidding you. All of our teleconference, even up to the national level, you're on Skype for the visuals, and it's a call-in on a bridge.
You don't, you don't get the lag that way.
Right, exactly, it works great.
That's why I asked about the setup, because it was such a problem before when
Otherwise, it looks like a bad Kung-Fu movie.
Yeah.
You see, you see her lips move, and then, then you hear her voice like two seconds behind it.
So you'll see her up there, and she'll see you through there, and then
I wonder if we could get a mount for that, that would allow us to move it.
Yeah, well, it was on a cart, and everybody tripped over it.
Because I have them in my house, and I can pull them out away from the wall and crank them around so that, you know
I would agree with that.
I think, is that in the budget?
Chris Chris asked it to be mounted on the wall so people wouldn't trip over the cart. That's what we did.
Yeah, and I, and I totally agree with that. But if we put a different mount up there, that, yeah, that
I also think for, you know, we do periodically do Skype meetings, I think we should put a camera up there so we don't have to run wires in there. I think it would look a lot more professional and clear, and have very little
So that's a camera on the podium?
Yeah.
Okay.
It has a microphone, but it's too far away.
Right.
So we're Skyping, and the microphone is in here, so we can still hear you, but then the video is over there, so it takes a little bit of hard work to make it happen, but I just, that's how we set it up when Pam was in Florida. And that was the best way to hear everybody, so.
Yeah, I, like I said, I, you know, the Skype visual with the call-in that, you know, I mean, we got VTCs, but they're hugely expensive, and then you're looking at, like this, you would have the VTC, and it's just way easier to do it this way. Sometimes technology
Maybe not through there, but I know I've seen sides for it.
I had it put away back there so I could see everybody here.
Right.
I had it in close, I could see you and then half a Tony and half was a Cooper. See you and then half a Tony and half was a Coop.
Well, that would have been fine.
And your issue with that is
want to leave anybody out.
So it's gonna be on that phone?
Yeah, so we'll bring that phone. We can put it on the table or something.
Will it reach the middle?
Yeah.
Everybody speak up.
It picks up pretty good.
Because I've been in those meetings where people are on speakerphone, and the audio is horrible. They sound like they're in a fish tank.
So did your hubby say you had to sit in the corner over there?
He did.
Yeah. He gave her specific instructions.
Well, actually, we were walking, and he waited at the interview time, and he goes, so we have a problem on Friday. And I said, what? And he said, well,
First aid
City Administrator interviews are up from 5 to 7.
Yeah.
Football's in New Ulm, I'm at 7, and I said, oh, I love football. He goes, well, I can't write the story on it if I, if I am not at the game, it's a lot harder to write. I go, I can write the story. So we're walking a little farther, and he's like, well, I can't remember what he said. Oh, he said, well, if you stay in town, then you won't be leaving your kids home alone for as long. And I said, well, why would I leave my kids home alone? They just come with to the football game.
So he calmed you into it.
You know, and I knew exactly what he wanted it, but he wouldn't admit it.
You were just gonna be a little
I know, and I'm like, I said, why don't you just tell me what you want? And he said, I want you to cover city administrators so I can cover the football game. I said, I knew that.
Why didn't you just say that?
I know. He said, because we're supposed to be partners, and he's not my boss. I said, remember that. Yeah.
It's probably warmer here.
I know, it probably is warmer there, or here. That's a long drive, we have to drive, go. I've got one kid playing in Tyler tomorrow morning for football, and I've got one playing in Slayton. And then as soon as they're all done, we have a wedding in Ohtana. So
Tomorrow's traveling.
My news will change next week, too. Yeah, so I figured, yeah, it's me out of driving.
Because what, they're in New Ulm?
Yeah. They're playing
MVL, isn't it?
The state. Is it Luca and Delph they're playing tonight?
I think so. Where's the cathedral?
No, I think maybe cathedral, I think they played, wasn't the MVL game the one they won by
I don't remember.
Can't remember.
I don't
That is one thing, is I, there's, there's a lot. There's always sports going on. Some people say, so what was the score of the game last week? And I'm thinking, once it gets in the paper, I kind of erase it out of my head, and then I'm on to the next game.
Because you already, a lot of times, you've already covered three more after that.
Yesterday, Brady played in Marshall, and then he's somebody, he knew that his parents might hear for volleyball. They turned it on in the third quarter on the sideline, he goes, mom! Because he knew he had to be in the row by 6 o'clock. So he got done, and he literally changed in the car on the way to Tracy. And we get there, and somebody says, well, the score of the game, and I'm like, I had to think for a second, I just came from that game, but I was already into volleyball mode at that point. Did you ask him what their record is, I couldn't tell you.
That would be one of the tough things with your guys' job. You've got to feel like you're meeting yourselves, coming and going.
I joked with Perry, I said, so I'll see you maybe Sunday? Because he's not going to Ohtana, because it's really hard for things like that. Somebody usually has to be in town, which usually something has to be covered. And things like, what do you do with your RCP so far in the beans? For them to play, which makes sense, so. I said that he wasn't coming. He probably could have, but I'm like, you know, then you get out of town, something happens, and so why don't we just see you Sunday? I guess it's like three days last week, I was in the city. It's just, it's busy. Keep a good calendar, that's for sure.
It's just gonna get worse, because with your own kids and everything, they pull you in one direction, and
I keep trying to tell myself that I'm gonna leave college next year, maybe I will be here, but
No.
I don't think it will.
It's just different.
I know.
Where's she gonna go? Does she know yet?
I don't know yet. We did one visit this summer, and that's over there, and she thought for sure she wanted to go there. She, she's like, no, that's her one, I said, you're gonna go to three colleges. That was my rule. Now, can we go to one? Well, it's funny, she looked at that one, and then it wasn't. She's still feel, you know? And that's why
It's funny that sometimes they can, when they walk on a campus, they can say, oh, this is where I want to go, or no, it's not the right feel.
Mac was one of them. He was going to Gustavus. And I said, no, you're going, we're gonna go visit some other ones. We went up to Concordia, and then went to Gustavus, then to Mankato State. I don't want to go to Gustavus. And of course, the day we're up at Concordia is this time of year, but it was like 80 degrees, sunshine, and campus was beautiful.
Of course it was.
I mean, a good school, but it's just kind of funny, it's like, well, I'm gonna go to Gustavus. Well, no, you're not.
She shocked it this weekend, asked me to set up a I never would have for her.
Really?
I didn't think she'd say that close. But she also looked good, so. And I went there, she went there, so.
One of the things is, nowadays, no matter how far away they are, they're not. So really, to go to Marshall, it doesn't seem like you're that much closer than if they go to Morris.
I would like to look at the period. Now, she's not hurt, she's not troubled, but I'd just like for her to see the difference between a four-year and a two-year before she feels that she has to do a four-year.
And you don't, and even if you do a four-year, you can do your first two at a time, and then still transfer and get your four-year.
I like to pull the numbers out and say this. I was just gonna Yeah, I don't know. Everybody said their senior year goes so fast, and I'm like, ah, it'll be fine, and I'm like, didn't we just start school, they're a month, then they're senior year?
It's awful. That's the one thing I remember, it was all the laughs of everything.
Last time we did this.
Well, we always laughed, too. Every other day, it was right out of check. Or something.
I feel like it's every day.
Monday, it's this, and then you go and see your picture, so there's a check for that, and then you're doing this, so there's a check for that. They're going here, so there's a check for that.
Start buying your graduation supplies.
Yep.
Stuff and spread it out.
I did. I just made, I told Perry, we need to do one every month, so we, like, we bought all the tablecloths one month. We bought, you know, like, each month, we buy something that we're gonna use next month. Just as a relief graduation.
As long as she picked out her colors.
I, I later commit. You gotta make a decision. Don't change your mind.
Yeah, but none of the other kids are having that.
I told her that if she changed her mind, Perry is gonna So Miss
No, it's me, Travis.
So are we waiting for her to call in, or are we calling her?
I have a number.
Okay.
Just so you know, she has been also keeping up on this stuff, so you can ask that question now, skip it.
Okay.
I mean, you did go back to him and ask 120 about the challenges.
Yep.
Yes, I was, because I was trying to circle what we did with the first one, so I could hit, make sure we hit all the, and I missed, you know, so, and I'm glad you brought it up, I appreciate that. So I think I got it right on this one.
Find out when you get down to line, you'll get corrected if you don't.
That's right.
You're the one that asked.
So
Get everything?
Yeah.
I'm going to, at this time, open the meeting back in session, because it's 7:00 PM or 6:59, so we can give her a call. Does anybody quickly want to make any changes to our process here, or is it going fine?
This is Kelly.
Hi Kelly, Shane was City of Tracy, I have the council also here on speakerphone.
Okay.
You ready to go?
I am, and I've got my husband on standby for the technology if we need him.
Okay. It says waiting to accept invitation on the Skype side of it.
It's waiting to accept invitation on their side.
Can you hear us okay?
Yeah.
Yes, I can actually, so far. We don't see where there's an invitation. It says, uh he's looking. Sorry.
Did you send it to the wrong one?
That's the one that he sent to me. KE.GO1?
Yes. I don't like it, I said in the email, I haven't used it for about three years, so. Online status, online, we're online. It's waiting for us to respond. What's your number? Maybe we need to put it in here to sign.
It says you're not online.
Oh, it says we're not online.
Can you cancel the request and try it over?
Cancel and try it over again. Yeah, I'm gonna put it on speakerphone for just a minute.
The proverbial reboot?
You mean, uh
Well, you had a request out to her, right, or not?
Yeah.
So cancel that request, and then just reboot Skype altogether and try it again.
Do I need to add you as a contact?
Might have to.
Yes, you do.
Yeah. Okay.
It should be City of Tracy, all lowercase, at outlook.com.
The mouse is being difficult. Let me see if I can do it. Search Skype directory. And then he said City of Tracy, all lowercase?
Yep.
Spaces?
Are there spaces in there? Nope. All one. All one word?
And is Tracy with a C-E-Y or C-Y? I can't recall.
Just C-Y.
Search Skype. It's looking for you.
You didn't know there would be a technology part of the interview, did you?
I'm failing it miserably.
So are we.
So we're even.
As long as you teach me how to use something, I'm good at it, but boy, this learning curve is tough. Uh, the internet? We got three bars, so it's really searching. City of Tracy, T-R-A-C-Y, no spaces between city and of, or of and Tracy?
Correct.
Okay.
Are you doing a search on her? Is there an add contact?
It added her.
Did it?
Is it Mark color ID here?
If it added her, just send her a regular text message to establish a connection.
So it says no results found. Oh, Kevin's gonna try it a different way. I'm supposed to get up, hold on. Family affair. In a hotel room.
You just send her like a plain text, hello, or test, or something.
I'm here?
Yes, so that is
You go through chat, or?
Yes, through chat.
And I'll use this?
And that will establish a connection, and then you can do the call.
The only time I use this is when I'm gone and I want to talk to my kids, so.
That should be pretty much all day, everything.
I'm only hearing parts of that. City of Tracy.
Hi, I'm in a search box here.
He's trying again, guys, it was just sitting there spinning on us.
So, how about we'll let these guys keep working at it, and we'll get started.
Okay, sounds good.
And hopefully, at some point, we can connect with a visual. So, I am Mayor Anthony Dimmers, and I should have been introducing myself to the other candidates, too, and I was woefully remiss in that. And the city council is here, we have Councilman Dave Teagues, Councilman Tony Peterson, Councilman Koutao, and Councilwoman Jerry Shones.
What was the council number's name before Jerry?
Koutao.
Koutao?
Yep.
Okay, and obviously, I'm Kelly. And technical assistance is Kevin.
Kelly and Kevin, all right, well, thank you for being with us tonight. We'll jump right into it. We have a series of questions. You know, in an effort not to make it sound like an interrogation, we're gonna ask the exact same questions that we've asked the other
Okay.
candidates, so that everything's even. So, we'll get underway. Please tell us about yourself and why you're interested in the job.
Well, about me, I've got an interesting background beyond my resume. Because everybody wants two pages of resumes, so I actually have a very wide variety of background. I started my own business when I was 14 years old, teaching gymnastics, when my gymnastic coach moved. And then I took that from, in college, and I started my own dance studios and was self-employed, until the floods of '93 kind of took away a lot of my clientele, but I held on until about '94, '95, with three very successful dance studios, where I was the comptroller, the marketing person, as well as the dance teacher, the choreographer. And then after a major injury, which my folks knew, but they were talking about, they made me get that business degree, with an emphasis on management and accounting, and I went to using my business degree, and I used that in nursing home, where I did medical billing, and the payables and payroll, and receivables. And then I went to be comptroller for hotel motels with a restaurant and bar, where I did three separate sets of financials, but also a full business picture of one business. So I had finances for each one of those entities, which is how I treat my city financials. Each department has a side of financials of revenues and expenditures, and we know where you're at within each department, as well as the whole of the city. And then I went to heating and cooling, comptroller for a heating, large heating and cooling industry. And then my husband got transferred to Omaha, Nebraska, and I learned through the real estate agent about a clerk position in Oakland, Iowa. And I went, oh, I'm not a clerk, I'm a finance officer, because I had the wrong stigma of a city clerk. I thought all we do is file papers all day. And I found my, I found my niche in public service. When we spend $500,000, we better improve the quality of life of every single citizen. And when a company spends $500,000, we often buttering just a few in the corporate level. And I enjoy making that $5,000 or that $500,000 improve everybody's quality of life, and not just a handful of people's. So that's my work career, and a little bit about me is, I'm quite creative. It's very unusual to see somebody that has both an accounting mind, a numbers mind, as well as a finance mind, and I happen to have both. And so I come to ideas and creativity outside of the box, but I'm also very analytical at the same time. So I might see something, I might be discussing something, and I can see that it works for here and now, but I can also see that, wow, wait a minute, when, 10 years from now, this may not be a good thing. Or what if, what happens when this happens in 10 years? Or that road that that developer wanted here makes sense now, but it's not gonna make sense when we want to connect the city to the further east in the future. So, kind of see things outside of the box a little bit, and I'm very creative.
Excellent. Okay, we'll move on to, why are you considering leaving your current position?
Say that again, sir?
Why are you considering leaving your current position?
Opportunity. I'm currently in a city of about 917 people, a very a very, um, growing community because of our status, um, close to Omaha, Nebraska, and we are a bedroom community to them. My goal is a city of five thousand at some point, and my career city manager, and Tracy is halfway there, or at least getting close to that. And plus, um, we like to travel to Minnesota quite frequently and have been in Lake Bitten area with, um, several times. And the national, the state park that's just below you there, we've been over there, and we just, we kinda like the area. So, opportunity to step up in the world and just try to future my, further my career.
Please tell us about one mistake you've made in the previous job and how you handled it.
Well, that was quite a, I've made a lot of them. I'm human. I make mistakes. Uh, one of my largest mistakes was, um, when I worked in a hotel as comptroller. We had computer systems that I had a very good, clean, accurate understanding of where my check balance was for my checking account. And the boss wanted me to keep this binder written, handwritten documentation of where our checking account was. And I did so, but I only did so once a week or so, because I had it right there at my fingertips anytime I wanted it, and I had the most accurate information right there. Um, so I didn't understand why he needed that binder, but I was keeping it up and I was doing it. And one day, he came in my office and he says, Kelly, we just overdrafted on the checking account. And I went, how? This is the balance we have. And he went and pulled that binder up, because when you're in corporate, a boss can write a check without council approval. And without seeing it on an agenda, and he wrote a check for thirty thousand dollars that I didn't know about. And it overdrafted us. And I found out why that binder was important, because sometimes he came in after hours, he made decisions without me there, and he didn't want anything to do with the computer system, and that handwritten report was what he went off of, if he could make that decision to buy something. And, um, it was an incredibly difficult learning curve. I felt horrendously terrible, because I've never overdrafted anything in my life. And, um, just felt awful. And at the end of the moment, he said, I, there's no need to punish you because, or discipline you, because you've just disciplined yourself harder than you could, I could ever think to. I've never forgotten it, and I continue to feel quite horrible about it, and it's been multiple years ago, but I learned from it tremendously, even though that didn't make any sense to me that that council wanted, that man wanted me to do that. I knew, I learned that many times people, I think we can see each other. Many times, there's a reason for it, whether I understand it or not. Can you guys see me? I can see myself.
There you are.
I can't, there you guys are. Now I can see you. Is the light behind me bothering you?
It's a little, bothers you out a little bit.
Okay, well, I'm kinda pale anyway. Okay.
We are from the north.
Is that better?
Yes, that's great.
Okay. There we go. Thank you for your patience on that, guys.
There, that's even better. Now we can see all of you.
So I learned that sometimes it doesn't make sense why you have to do things, but you need to do them, or at least ask questions to find out why.
Okay, good, yeah.
I also learned that we're human and that we make mistakes, and it's okay. Just pass up to them and learn from them and move on.
No, we don't allow them here. Um, do you consider your management style to be most like a commander or a coach?
Coach.
And can you explain that?
My management, I do not like to micromanage, however, I will if I have to, and I'll be upset with you if I have to, because that means you're not doing your job. Um, my management style is give you the tools that you need, and if you need something, you need to let me know that you need it, whether that be education, whether that be a piece of equipment. If it's an extremely expensive equipment, explain to me why you need it. Explain to me how it's going to help you better, be better at your job. And then we'll do the cost analysis, and sometimes that cost analysis means that maybe it's better to hire that out instead of buy that very large piece of equipment. Um, sometimes it means that it's better to have our guys do it. So we'll work together and figure out how to get you to be the most successful person that you can be in your job. And if you're not letting me know you need something, that's your fault. Um, but hopefully, open door style, come in anytime. Um, I'm in a very small city right now. We have four full-time employees. When those works department guys comes in, come into my office, that means they need something from me. And it doesn't matter how busy I am, I'm gonna put something down, and we're gonna work on it and get them back out on the field as fast as they can. Because with only two guys running an entire city, they don't come in the office very much in the summer. They don't have time.
Do you have office staff?
I have one part-time deputy clerk. I'm ready for some team members underneath me.
We all look like we're looking to the left, because that's where the screen is with you on it, and the camera is in front of us, so...
Okay.
We're all looking over here. We're actually looking at you.
I think of that.
So, um... What would others that you have worked with or have worked for you, what would they say about you?
Honest. I'll tell you straight from the hip. You may not like the answer, but I'll tell it to you. Um... Faithful. I have empathy. If you've got a family issue and you need to be with that family, please let me know. I'm gonna get you there. Uh, family's very, very important, and if you have the ability to be flexible with your staff, they're gonna give you more for it. They're gonna work harder for you when you honor them in their needs. Um, I like to support them. I like to thank them and say please and thank you. I don't care if it's your job to do the mowing for the cemetery. I'm gonna tell you, thank you, that looks nice. I'm gonna tell you, please, can you go out and weed whack magals? Ped stone again, magals concerned that there's a little bit, that the grass is not quite perfect. I, I just believe in that, even with waiters and waitresses. I know it's their job to wait on me, but please and thank you, they're important.
Okay, great. Um, so in this job, and I'm sure you know, uh, there are no two days alike, and even though you have the to-do list for the day, um, you know, a telephone call can change everything. So, how do you take care of that phone call and still get the to-do list done?
Well, depends on how many phone calls there are like that in the day. Um, there are days that we filled it thirty, one day here recently, we filled it thirty phone calls and fifty emails. My to-do list did not get done that day. Um, but it did get done that evening, after everybody else went home and the door locked. So, um, there are many times that that is the case. Um, trying to be city manager, finance officer, and city clerk, that happens for me. I'm currently working often fifty to sixty-hour work weeks. Um, and I, like I said, I'm looking forward to having the staff that can fill that in. But when you, when there's only two people in the office and you field that many phone calls and emails, sometimes that to-do list is gonna be done tomorrow. Um, I'm very good at multitasking, and we can get it done. But there are some things that, when you're working on a bank reconciliation, trying to multitask that, you're gonna make a mistake. And it's best to put it aside and, and deal with it, what you're, what's in front of you.
Yeah, sometimes you just have to focus on, because mistakes are critical.
Yes, those are important.
So what is your biggest weakness and your biggest strength?
My biggest weakness is I don't say no often enough, and I get too much on my slate. Um, jack of all trades, hundred and ten percent effort, and sometimes I need to tell the city council, you know what, guys, you already have fifteen other things that we're working on. I don't think we should add this one on right now, but let's add it on in about six months. Um, I messed up myself here recently and said, hey, there's this grant out there, and I think we should apply for it. It's due on the fifteenth, and we're working to get the bids together so we can get that accomplished.
Okay.
And my strengths, um, hard worker, honest, faithful. Um, I just... I like, I put other people first sometimes, a lot of times.
Alright. How do you handle conflict between staff members?
Hopefully, there is none. Um, hopefully, we have a good enough relationship that we don't have that kind of conflict and that we can address each other, because we're working together as a team, and we're able to say, hey, Joe, I don't, I don't agree with you. Um, and, and Joe can say, well, why don't you agree with me, and we have a conversation about it. But when there is strife, and we just had that recently, I dealt with it. Um, I had an individual who, we had a water main break, and one of the individuals that doesn't like overtime decided he wasn't going to come in and turn the valves on when the contractor got done that night. It was one of those long ones, because it was under a main state highway, um, which is not a quick, easy fix when you're under a state highway. And the, one of the gentlemen who, our main water person could not come back that evening at eight o'clock to turn those valves, because he's, his wife works nights, and it was her night to work, and he had the two-year-old. And the other gentleman was not going to come back in. He only lives five blocks from the incident, and he wasn't gonna come in and turn those valves. Um, he turned the valves when the evening was over with, because that was the right thing to do. And we had a conversation with that. He was actually the one on call that night, too. When you're on call, you turn the valves.
With that being said, though, um, coming here, like you said, you're hoping to have a few more supportive staff and that, working with you. So as you add more people into the picture and everything, you increase the chance of maybe some conflict. So how would you handle a conflict between two, two employees?
First, you need to listen to each one individually and skip both their stories without the other one present, so they feel comfortable and free to speak freely. Um, I want, I want you to be able to speak freely with me as a staff member. And then you work on finding from each of them what they think the problem is and how that problem can be solved. And you go back to the drawing board and you're on your own and think through what things have happened. And then you bring both of them together and try to come up with a resolution between the two of them, but based on what each of them said, and you be that mediator and help them come to agreements and at least a compromise between the two of them.
Alright, very good. Um, what is your experience with budgets and grants? I know you mentioned that just a short time ago. And can you describe how government accounting works?
Well, finance, comptroller, being the comptroller for companies has been my forte, and budgeting is my, one of my favorite seasons of the year. Others call me crazy. I enjoy budgets. I enjoy the challenge of getting it to balance. I enjoy the ability to make some dreams happen, but I don't enjoy saying, unfortunately, council, we can only do two of your dreams and not five of your dreams this year. So, uh, one of the things, budget becomes easy when you have a strategic plan or a capital improvement plan. And then you take that capital improvement plan and you put it into a financial plan. Because you might have three or four major items in your immediate needs that are several hundred thousand dollars or millions of dollars. You can't do one after another, year after year. But you can do one, and then you go grab some of the smaller ones that are maybe on your medium range of the four-to-five-year range, um, plan, and you budget those in there and you financially plan how to do those so you can keep your debt levy stable and not going up and down. And that you just financially plan those so that you don't... I mean, budget becomes easy when you know what order they need to go into financially, as well as the need. Um, because we look at that strategic plan that we all created together as a team, and where we know what's next. So, that's one of the ways I do budgets. I've had councils that want to know every single line item, and they want to know the budget versus actual for the last four years, and they review every single line item. That's fine with me. I've also have a current council. They wanna know what projects can we do financially this year, and does it fit into the budget, and give you the final results. Uh, I like more input from you, but they felt that they did all the inputs in the work when they did that strategic plan and when they did that financial plan. And government is, I believe Minnesota's like Iowa, in which that you are fund accounting. And I treat those funds as separate departments, just like a corporation. It would be your water department, your sewer department, and I create a financial for each one of them. And, but I also have a city financial that overall encompasses everything, so that we know where we're at by department and we know where we're at by the city. Um, those funds with government accounting, I have a limit of what I can spend based on what you've given me, without your approval. It might be up to five thousand, it might be up to twenty-five hundred. That depends on each council, and each council's different. But everything else needs to be on an agenda, and it needs to be voted for before we can spend it, and many things need to have public hearings.
Okay, um... And how about grants?
Grants? I have had quite a bit of success with local foundations in our area. We have what's called Iowa West Foundation in the county I'm from. Um, it is tied to casinos and casino monies, and we are very blessed. We've had a lot of success with infrastructure grants through that program, as well as recreational, uh, items like parks and things. I have worked with, um, the states and written state safe for out to school grants that scored very, very well, but I did not get that grant. Um, I have, excuse me, I have a mixed blessing in our community in that we have a very high household income of about seventy-five thousand dollars for the median income. So many of the federal and state grants, um, they're, we're eligible for them. However, we score very, very, very low on financial need. And so I have actually won grants based on the projects. When you separate, state will let us see that. Your project scored high enough that you would've gotten the grant, but your financial need score was one out of ten, and we didn't get the grant. So, I haven't been successful with those state and federal grants because of the high income level in our community. And that's because we're a bedroom community in Omaha.
Sure. So are you actually writing the grants, or is somebody...
Yes.
You're, you're writing them? Okay.
Yes, I get to write the grants, and I also get to be the finance officer and make sure the monies are handled correctly on those grants.
Alright. Thank you. Uh, next is your, should you get, should you be selected? What would your priorities be for the first three months, six months, and a year?
I'm gonna write that down so I remember how many months there. The first three months is to get to know my staff, get to know what they do. Um, actually sit in the, do a day with the each department head. Get with that works director and show me what your day looks like. Be a shadow. Um, I, which, they might be laughing at me right now. But get to know what you do. Get to know what your day is like, so I have a half a knowledge. When you come to me with a problem, I know what you're experiencing. Doesn't mean I'm gonna get down and screen, clean the screens of the list station. Not gonna do that. Definitely wanna know what your job is like. I wanna know what your work environment is like. Do you have the equipment you need? Uh, I wanna hear from you as you're working through your day, when you're struggling and, and when you're not struggling, what makes your job good. So the first three months is to get to know the staff, get to build that team. And not just the staff, when I, the elected body is part of that building of that team. We all have to be a team together to make the city work well. Um, six months, obviously, continue building that team. That's gonna be an everyday effort, regardless of how many years out that we are. In six months, I have... In six months, I have, um, the research you've done on Tracy, I'm seeing a decline in population with your school system. I'm seeing, I, the, I'm seeing reports of some downtown businesses that may have been not there, that aren't there anymore, that you're concerned about that in some of the news articles I've read. And I can't remember for sure, but I, I think that the population has kind of stabilized as well and not growing. And one of the things we need to figure out is what's causing that? And can we reverse that? It's not going to happen overnight, but what is causing our school population to be down? Looking at your population of citizens versus your school population, I was shocked when I saw that because in a city of 917, the K through 12 population is 805 in where I'm currently working. So, so I was kind of shocked when I saw your school population. I did see that you had a, a private school and that, but their, their numbers aren't very high either when you put them together, when you put both schools together. So trying to figure out what's causing us to lose our, our population and why it stag, begins to stagnant and how can we change that and bring in economic development or, and help the school boost those numbers a little bit? Because if you've got kids coming to school, you're going to have people wanting to live in your community. In 12 months, um, continue, um, just continue working forward and forging through.
So what I, in a nutshell, what I got from that, just to be clear is to familiarize, begin to troubleshoot issues, and then implement.
Correct.
Okay. If you have a family member or a very close friend working for the city and they need to be disciplined, how do you handle that?
Well, in Iowa, that's called nepotism in the state of Ohio. So we're not able to, we're not supposed to hire our own family members and council's not supposed to hire them, but it does happen in these small communities and we know it does. What was that?
It did say very close friend as well.
Very close friend. Um, I learned not to mix friends and business a long time ago. You will see me be friends and co, with my coworkers at work, but you probably won't see me socializing with them. Um, it doesn't mix. When you do have to discipline, you're, I will discipline because you, even if you are my friend, but I don't want to lose the friendship which it will cause. Um, so, but I'll discipline and do the right thing in that situation. You may not get away with it, but I don't want to, I don't want to be in a situation where my best friend is working with me because, and that I hired my best friend because it's got, something's going to go wrong sometime.
So tell us why you feel you should be offered this position over any of the other candidates?
Well, I've got 18 years of government experience, which I don't know if that's more than the others or not. I have been in every role in the office. I, I have knowledge, firsthand knowledge and experience in creating those financials, but also doing all the data entry with payables, utility billing, payroll, receivables. I've also had tremendous experience with housing and economic developments through, uh, I, we, we call it tax incremental financing in Iowa where we have created TIF districts, which is the tax incremental financing acronym, and created urban renewal areas by ordinance to create the TIF districts to be able to give that developer, make the developer take the risk of building all the infrastructure for the roads, the water, the sewer, and then we give him back the tax money of that incremental difference. The base value stays there and everybody still gets their base taxes off that land. But when that land starts developing with those houses going up, that difference in taxes, we're able to abate back to that developer. And he, if he doesn't build those houses fast enough, sell those lots fast enough to build those houses, he's the one taking the loan risk and not the city. And I've had a lot of experience with that for housing districts. I just landed another developer. Uh, they're going to start building 29 homes. Actually, the dirt work is almost done. They're going to start laying pavement hopefully in the next couple of weeks if the weather would stop raining in southwest Iowa. Um, so with abatements, I've got a lot of experience with working with those developers and working with the engineers and the attorneys to create those TIF agreements. And I'm not 100% sure what Minnesota calls those types of abatements, but I'm willing to learn and start working with them.
Um, what is your knowledge of employment law as it applies to union employees?
Union employees? I have to be honest, I have no experience working with a union. I do know that I like to learn and that I will learn anything put before me and do the research needed. Um, with union, I would need to bring in a consultant to help me go through those negotiations the first time. Do you have a union in Tracy?
Yes. Two of them.
Yes. Two, okay. Um, so I would need honestly to learn how to do that. Um, I'm not afraid of it by any means. I've got several friends here in Iowa that have had unions in, with their cities. So I'm actually already studying the union law here and trying to keep up on that even though I don't have a union in my city and I hope I never do. Um, but Iowa took away a lot of the negotiation powers with, of unions, um, a couple of years ago. They followed Wisconsin with a law here recently. So that's really changing and that's one of the reasons I'm very interested. Plus I want to step up and go to a larger city. So I need to be aware of how to deal with those unions and negotiations before I get there. But it is something I do not have experience in.
Okay. Can you, can you explain what a levy means as applied to budgeting?
Say that again, sir?
Can you explain what levy means as applied to budgeting?
Levis?
Yes.
That is the amount of dollars we're going to charge the taxpayers. In Iowa, that is, um, that taxable valuation divided by a thousand times the levy. And I'm not sure, I did not look that up in Minnesota's laws. I apologize. I should have of how you figured that. And that levy is a direct relationship of how much we're going to charge those citizens. And when I'm working with the budget, I like to show you the council what that levy that you're thinking of approving does to the property owner of 100,000, 200,000, and 300,000, what their current levy is, how much it's costing them, and then what's this proposed levy going to cost them so that you as a council and elected body absolutely know that that's going to raise their taxes from the city by in, I'm going to use the current example, about 50 cents is what we raised levy for this last year. Um, it looks like a huge jump, but it really wasn't. I also like to show that on the website as well as the newsletters once it's approved so that the citizens can know what it's doing to them and be very open and honest with them.
Okay. Thank you. Um, do you intend to live in Tracy? And can you make the emergency response time as it applies to other employees, which is 10 minutes?
We would definitely be moving. There wouldn't, there's no way we're going to commute from southwest Iowa.
Yeah, I got to ask the question as it's written.
Definitely would stay within that 10-minute response time. We also have to bring, you know, the spouse is going to have to find a job. So, um, most likely it's, I'm hoping it's in Tracy, but it might be in a neighboring community. He's the one that gets to drive now and he's going to continue to drive now. So we're going to get me close to my workplace and he gets to drive, but.
Okay. Um, so I'm, you've done your homework. You know that we've had challenges here lately.
Yes.
And conflict of interest and open meeting laws have been a sticking point as of late. What is your approach to avoid these pitfalls?
Conflict of interest? Oh, I hope it never happens, but it is happening and I have seen some of those articles. Um, first, get to know my council members, get to know those board members, and get to know what businesses they own in town if possible. Not a requirement by law that you tell us all your personal information. Um, tell me how much ownership you have in that business. If I find out that you have a business that is on the agenda, and I'll ask you, how much ownership do you have in that? In Iowa, there is a law about how much ownership. You can still deliberate and not have it be considered a conflict of interest if you don't have more than an X amount of percentage of interest in that ownership. Um, learn that law and figure out what that is. But even with that law, even if you comply with it and you don't have too much ownership, I'm going to advise you that for perceptual reasons, you may, you need to leave the council table and sit in the audience on that deliberation and that discussion and that vote. Because in small towns, we all know, everybody else knows that you own that business or have a part in it and it's, it could be considered a conflict of interest and we don't even want the perception of a conflict of interest. Um, open meetings, definitely need to educate. The first thing I do for a newly elected official, actually before they even run, when they decide to hand in their nomination papers, is I hand them an open record, open meeting handbook from the Iowa League of Cities. It's pocket size. You can actually put it in your pocket and it gives you an overview of those laws so that you're very well aware of them. And then I'd like to have, very early on after the election, I'd like to have workshops with the council, especially the new council members, um, because if we have new council members, to teach them about open records and open meeting laws and how to comply with them. And with this new age of technology, please don't text each other in deliberation because it gets us in trouble. Um, I have to, my council likes to text me all the time and they like to do it in group texts and I can't tell you how many times it's very normal, it's very fine, and then all of a sudden they start to liberate and the guy says it's a deliberation and they stop immediately. They know that when I say that, they're pushing that boundary of open meeting right there because we've trained them and that we've got to be very conscientious of this.
Okay. So with your knowledge of everything that's happened here lately, uh, how would you propose to move Tracy forward?
Definitely need some training, um, just some good old fashioned workshops and sit downs and learn about conflict of interest and what, what smells like conflict of interest. If it smells like conflict of interest, let's back away as a board member or that elected official in that decision-making and how to realize it's possible, there's a possible conflict of interest. Open meetings, open records, get very open about agendas. I know, I know Iowa requires us to post them in three places in our community, but let's get them out there on that website before the, the meeting. Let's get them out there on the Facebook, say, hey, the new agenda's posted and let's get public, be more open with the public. Um, you can't make them read what you post and, and put on their websites and the Facebook, but if it's there and you're not hiding anything and you're being far more open. We're open, we have those meetings, we put the agendas in the papers, we put the minutes out there. It's all there for them to see. We're not hiding anything, but sometimes we got to put it out there even more so that they don't see it as hiding, so they don't have to look for it. So we have it in so many places, it's there. The other thing is get to talking to people. Um, talk to those citizens and say, well, why do you think there's a, an open meeting violation? We posted that agenda and, you know, hear from them. Why they're, why, where the perception's coming from that there's an open meeting issue? Because most city councils try very, very hard not to have an open meeting law violation. And we just, we just try to, in today's social media society, they want information quickly and they want that information all the time. And we got to try to get that out there for them.
Okay. Uh, does anybody have anything that they want to add or ask or? Okay, so, um, before we conclude, do you have any additional statements or comments or questions for us?
You don't, first, I don't know if I've ever seen the potential wage for this. I'm interested in the area because we love to fish, believe it or not. And we love to be closer to the lakes and, and this Missouri river keeps flooding over here that we're in. Uh, we, it flooded again a lot in a few days, a few days ago for the third time this year. Um, devastating, but, um, what is the wage range that you're thinking for the job?
Seventy to 105, I think.
Yeah. That's what was advertised.
Seventy to 105 is the advertised.
Okay. Um, that is, I was remembering that, but I didn't bring that sheet with me to the hotel that I, and so I didn't think I had seen it, but I, I think I have seen it now that you say that. So, um, what is the benefit package?
Shane would be best to address that, I think.
So be health insurance.
And we don't have.
Um, health insurance and then there's a little bit of life insurance, uh, just a small policy.
Okay.
And then, um, PERA, of course, um, if you're familiar with that, it's kind of like retirement plan.
A pu, a public retirement system?
Yep.
Yep.
And then there's a few other, I mean, paid vacation, holidays, and then sick leave.
Okay. And a hard question, as a city council, and any one of you or all of you can answer, how do you see Tracy moving forward through some of these difficulties? How do you propose that we're going to get through those?
Just got to get everybody to start working together and it's, it's, uh, it's a challenge. But I'd, you know, it's, it's something that's got to be kept up after. There is a vocal minority that celebrates the negative. And, uh, it, it's frustrating, but you deal with it when you can and you work around it most of the other time.
I would agree with you on the training issue. I think that's key, um, so that we can get smart about best practices and what we're supposed to be doing. And, uh, and I would agree with Tony on communication. I think that's the other key area that, that we need to work on as a council. And just building that sense of community and teamwork that we need to have. If we do those things, I believe we will do very well in the next few years and we will grow.
And I just think one of the things that's going to help is getting a leader at the helm again, that there's somebody there to help guide the ship and the, the two different facets of people that are, you know, I almost want to say that we're not the Hatfields and the McCoys.
The Bulls.
But yeah, to get those people to, to start working together again and realizing we're not going to agree on everything, but we have to treat each other with respect, voice our opinions. Then a vote is made by the council, listening to the input we get from our citizens. But once a decision is made, we walk out in support of that decision. And if they see that in us, I think it's going to fall into them that they will start realizing they don't have to always agree, but they need to just respect decisions that are made. And as long as they feel they're being heard, I think that's going to make a difference. And that's where you will come into it.
I think we need a strong administrator to make this happen.
Yes.
I would agree. And on, would you be willing to go through team building, building workshops with a consultant that focuses on team building? Um, that allows me as the new administrator to also be part of the team building exercises instead of being the moderator that puts you through them?
I think we would take that guidance.
Which I can do.
But just, I'm the history guy around here. We.
Say that again?
I'm the history. I'm the history guy here. I've got the most time on the council. And the team building stuff, and I'm not opposed to it in any way, shape, or form, but as history, it's been attempted on a couple of occasions and everything's good and everybody's up for it. And then when it's all done, two days later, it's all gone. I mean, and that's just, I don't know how to overcome it, but it's, that's the history.
I think that would be up to us. And that's why we need a strong administrator to reinforce that and hold us to the task.
You know, we would look at you for some guidance and with your experience as to what you would want to see, not just from us as a council, but also all members of other committees and that that we have, you know, in the city. I think it's not just council. Yes, council, we need to do things, but...
There's other boards and committees, you're right. And I think, I really do believe that we all want to see the same thing. We just have different ideas of how to do it. And that's what we need to be able to communicate and work with and realize that it's not always going to go your way and you can't walk out and pout because it didn't. You have to support, even if it doesn't go the way you think it should, we need to support each other. So it really comes down to that, in my opinion.
So would you be, so like if you do a team building thing, it doesn't, it can't end that day or that week. It's got to be, that's where I come in as a city administrator and continue to hold everybody accountable. But it sounds like from the conversation you just had around the table with the other boards and such, that we need to do some goal setting together with those boards.
Yes.
And work together as to what is our objective as a city, as an organization, and what are our main goals? And this is all the goals that everybody needs to work with, whether they're on the Parks and Rec Board, or whether they're on the P&amp;Z Board or the council. Is what we're working on in our decision being based on what these current goals are?
Yep.
I would agree. I think that over time, these entities have kind of separated, and we need to pull that back into a nucleus.
Again, everybody pulling in the same direction.
And they have to have a purpose, somewhere to go, a target, a goal, like you said. So...
I kind of asked you a tough question, I apologize.
Well, no, we figured, we are interviewing you, but you are also interviewing us. It's a two-way street.
I wish I could be there.
If you don't like us, you're not going to want to come to work here.
Well, yeah, because...
So we want you to fall in love with us.
Well, that might be a little extreme, but...
I wish I could be there tonight, and I do apologize, but...
Well, the thing is, is we're looking to add a member to the team, and we're looking to add a key member of that team that can provide strength and leadership for us as a team. So yeah, you need to know, you know, who we are as much as we need to know who you are.
And that's a lot easier if I could have been there in person, but I really thank you for making accommodations tonight. I'm actually been in an all-day interview with Cedar Point, Iowa for an administrator position. They literally split the council off into the two people...
They don't have nearly the fishing that we do.
Say that again?
They don't have nearly the fishing that we do.
You're right. They have a trail that connects to the National Wide Trail, though. Although I'm not a biker, so that won't work too much.
You had mentioned earlier that, you know, you wanted, this is your next step in working towards a larger community. If you're given a position, how long would you realistically look at staying here?
That's a tough question. My goal is a city of 5,000. However, I do think that many of our small towns can get to 5,000 and can be challenging and allow us to continue to grow and work there. I do, I'm going to be brutally honest, like I was today with Cedar Point, is I have 18 parents. And I don't know if I can answer that question honestly, because if something should go that they need me back closer to home, I'm going to go where my parents are. But they're doing great, you would not know the big age they are. My daughter goes and visits them and she comes home and rests. Because Grandma and Grandpa are the hip Grandma and Grandpa that go all the time and never stop. Dad is still very actively farming. So he's a mule, he just keeps going. And their health is very, very good. But I also realize they're reaching an age where that could change any day. I look at their friends and in the neighborhood and I'm like, oh, wow, that could be my folks. Their generation is the only generation left in our neighborhood that I grew up in, in the rural community, in the small farming community that I'm in, that was from. So I can't answer that, I wish I could.
That's a fair answer.
But I can't answer it.
So barring something like that, though, let's assume that, you know, because I think for anybody, that that's exactly what they would do and that's what I would expect. Barring that, how much time do you think you can give us?
Well, my favorite job was Underwood, and I did that for 10 full years in the city of Underwood. And honestly, I looked, I wasn't looking for a new position when I took Trainer. The headhunter knew me through conferences and such. I lived in Trainer. I've lived in Trainer for 18 years, but I worked for Trainer for four. And Trainer kind of sought me out and convinced me to come work in the city I was living in and help them. They were starting to see a decline in population, they had tailmated. They are 15 minutes from Omaha, Underwood is 15 minutes from Omaha. Underwood saw a 64% increase in population from 1990 to 2010. Trainer stayed stable. They lost like two people. By all accounts, with our Council of Governments, which is our metro area planning agency in Omaha, Underwood and Trainer should have grown at the same rate over that same 20 years. Underwood should never have caught up in population to Trainer, and they did. So Trainer pulled me away from Underwood and wanted me to come and help them change their direction and get some development in there and change the economic development status of their community. And, you know, it takes a long time to get to that position, many years. We are seeing change, but it takes a long time to reverse it, too. We are celebrating a new housing development of 29 homes that hopefully will be built in the next 10 years. The developer wants to build them a lot faster than that, but our TIF agreement is 10 years. So we also had a division in our school district over an issue, and our city is very torn. And they wanted me to help build those fences and mend that seam again. Now, that takes a lot of time, too, that we're getting there. So I got pulled away from Underwood, otherwise it'd still be in Underwood. They still called me for advice and I still have trained their next two city clerks and continue to work with them and help them, so.
All right, very good. Do you have anything further for us?
What is your timeline on potential decision? And also date that you would like, the first start date?
Yesterday and maybe an hour from now.
I mean, we'll need to do some reference checks and that, but I would think maybe, I'm looking at Shane now, I don't think we'd be able to get something out there in the next week.
Oh, yeah.
For an offer. And then I guess, like Tony said, then we'd like the person to start here the next day, but we realize they probably have to give notice at their job. But as soon as that person would be able to come, we would like them here. Because right now, we're running with Shane as interim and winter's coming and he thinks he's going to be plowing snow and stuff like that, so...
If you're selected, I mean, we would work with you on, you know, the things that you would need to do to get here and, you know, we can work with you on that. Anybody else disagree with that? So, but I think across the board, we would really like as soon as possible, if that was...
I will, my current contract says that I have to give 30-day notice. So we have, once we come to a conclusion, there is a minimum of 30 days. I have not informed my council that I'm a finalist in both Tracy and in Cedar Point, Iowa. I like my job, I want to keep it, so. But I do see some opportunities here. One of the main reasons I put applications out when I did is we had, we have three up for reelection and not a word was being said by any of them that they were going to run again. And finally, one of them is running again, so I'm excited and we do have a full ballot and we know who's running. But I wanted to make sure that I had my name out there and was starting to see what's possible for me to grow as well as in case something tremendously happens in the election in November. Our community is divided. I'm the first city manager in, and there is still elements of that community that does not want a city management for a government. Of course, they're the ones that have the weed abatements and got denied their planning and zoning permits and those kinds of things, but there is still that element out there. So I wanted to make sure that my family was secure in case there was nobody on that ballot.
Well, excuse me, I want to thank you on behalf of the council for your time tonight and sharing with us and letting us get to know you a little bit, and we will be in touch.
Thank you very much. Thanks Shane over there for all the roles he's playing today. He's quite a trooper.
He's got the big hat rack.
It is. That's so faithful of you to your community.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night.
Thanks.
Yeah.
Oh, no, it hung itself up.
It hung itself up.
It didn't look like it was sitting in the cradle.
The speaker died. Well, I'd make a motion to close the open sessions so we can, you have to enter into the closed session.
You get to go home.
Yay. He's going to have a beating himself.
We have a motion, can I get a second?
Second.
First and second discussion. Allen Faber.
Aye.
Any opposed? Open session is hereby closed, and we will now open...
Open session is hereby opened.
Not yet.